You're live Chair.
Thank you Richard. Good afternoon everyone and welcome to this meeting of full council which is being held fully remotely once again and in accordance with the temporary legislation changes that allow the council to continue to operate in an open and transparent way. Decisions made at today's meeting are just as applicable as in a traditional meeting setting, provided the numbers of members in attendance ensures that the meeting remains for it. I'd like to remind members that this meeting is still being livestreamed to the public and can I request you all switch off your cameras and mute your microphones when you're not speaking and also ensure that you have your chat bar open for voting purposes. As usual points of order can be popped into the chat bar, written into the chat bar and I'll invite you in to express your point of order, declare your point of order. Moving in the seconding of items, there'll be a raised hand facility for each agenda item as usual in the chat bar, so please ensure you locate the correct one for that particular agenda item. And the vote facility again will be in the chat bar. I just wanted to remind people about the way we're going to operate remotely, especially if there's anybody joining us for the first time. And it's a very, very sad day today because this meeting, we're starting this meeting with the absence of one of our most highly respected members, councillor David Dovey. David worked tirelessly for the residents of Chepstow and Monmouthshire in many capacities and he was a very good friend to all of us. I fondly remember the days when David was chairman of MCC and his good lady Stephanie was mayor of Chepstow, we spent time with them as Chris, Chris and myself, I was mayor of the Public of Enny at the time, and we attended many events, David and Stephanie always carrying out their duties in a most professional and sincere manner. We have opened a book of condolences, so please let our PA Linda Greer know if any tributes you may wish to make to David. I must say tributes have flowed in, they started to flow in straight away when we heard about the sad passing. I will shortly invite our group leaders and some councillors who work closely with David, particularly in Chepstow, to say a few words. But I do speak for every member today and officers, we've all been very, very saddened by David's passing. So I would now like to invite everyone to join in a period of silence in memory of David and all who passed away since we last met and remember Stephanie and the family and all who have been bereaved. Thank you. I'd now like to invite Reverend Councillor Bob Green and to conduct prayers for the soft rest this afternoon.
Heavenly Father, we come together this afternoon with heavy hearts as we mourn the loss of our colleague David Dovey. We bring before you Stephanie, their son Spencer and his family. May they know the comfort and reassurance of your love surrounding them. In remembering David, we give you thanks for his contribution to the work of this council, for his tenacity in support of the issues of Sevenside, Chepstow and his ward St King's Mark in particular. May our hearts be lifted as we remember fondly a real gentleman and a true friend to all across this council regardless of political allegiance. Your promise of eternal peace and salvation is there for each of us who turn to you. May David now know that peace and be at rest with you. We bring to you also all those in the family of Monmouthshire County Council who are mourning the loss of their loved ones at this time. Partying is painful, comfort to all those who mourn. We give you thanks that the darkness of these past months is gradually lifting. We give thanks for all those who have worked tirelessly for the benefit of others. This time of lockdown has been particularly hard for younger people. They are the ones most likely to find themselves without jobs. They are the ones who have suffered so much from the deprivation of contact with their peers. Father, we hold them in our prayers. And we pray for the students returning to our schools and for their teachers. May any scars of these past months soon heal so that they may resume their education and normal social interaction, so important to their development. And so we turn to our business of the day as we set the financial course of this council for the next year. May our discussions and debates show respect for the views of others and may we work together towards the outcomes that are best for all your people. In the name of Christ our Saviour we pray. Amen.
You're on mute Chairman.
Thank you Father Bob. I'd now like to invite our leader councillor Peter Fox to say a few words about David.
Thank you Madam Chairman, good afternoon members. Today will be a strange meet in many ways, knowing that David isn't with us anymore and he won't be with us in the future physically. Over recent months he had spoken, we'd spoken together and he was so apologetic for us, he saw it, he didn't think he was pulling his weight and I tried to reassure him not to worry that all was fine, but he was such a conscientious and proud man that he didn't want to let anybody down. He always had that smile in him and that glint in his eye, always courteous and genuinely concerned and caring for people, always asking how they were and their families were. David always had time for everyone and sometimes I feel guilty, perhaps I didn't give him enough time and everyone was fond of him, even when his hand used to go up at the last moments before you thought a meeting was to end, but he had that glint in his eye and we all used to smile. But our virtual and physical chamber will not be the same without him, but he won't be forgotten as his smiling face is within our gallery of past chairmen and will be a constant reminder to us of a true friend and gentleman. Our thoughts remain in with Steph and Spencer and the family through what will no doubt be very difficult months ahead. Thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you councillor Fox. I'd now like to invite Leader of the Labour Group, Catherine Petroni, say a few words.
Thank you Chair. We'd like to add the Labour Group's condolences to Steph and Spencer and the whole entire family. I've got a particular experience with David where I contested the ward which his lovely wife was councillor and thankfully somehow managed to end up victorious, but David at the count said to me, I should watch my back, which I took in jest, but showed how much passion he had for his wife. But even though that comment, ever since I was on the council, I'd never detected any malice, I never detected any kind of hatred, he was always courteous to me, always talked to me and asked about my family, I never detected any resentment and that's the mark of the man and I just heard councillor Fox refer that he was concerned he wasn't pulling his weight for the group. I, from an oppositional perspective, thought he really was pulling his weight for his community and what sticks in my mind was when he stood up for Chepstow School and for Chepstow, even against his political grouping, he knew who was top and that was the residents of Chepstow and his wards and so he was definitely pulling his weight in my eyes and he'd be sorely, sorely missed.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite councillor Simon Howard, Leader of the Independent Group.
Yes and good afternoon Chairman, members, chief exec and many officers who will be watching today. I'd just like to say a few words with reference to David, I've known him for many, many years, got massive respect for him and I do know him more probably not on the political side but on the select side of it, worked for many years with him in select and his work, his tireless work which he would do within the select was always the thoughts of us as members as well and the knowledge the gentleman had as well. So for Steph and Spencer and the family, you've had a great man there and he will be truly missed and I'm no officers within our authority as well, I have massive respect for him, who work with him. So I know for them as well, I will speak for them because they won't be able to have their say, but they will be able to have their thoughts put into the book there and I thank you as a councillor as well for giving us this opportunity as members. I've been here many, many years and this is the first time I've actually lost a member, a working member I've been with, we've had members who've passed away when we haven't been there, but this is the first time and I was really saddened when I saw David, when Peter sent the email, I was really saddened about that chair and I am still saddened, but I'll always remember David, I remember him driving, I think it was a red MR2 and how he had that little gleam, as Peter says, he came to the car park there and thought he was just a gentleman and you can't take that from him and I will always think about David and I'm sure the group as well, we had some good times in that office with him. Thank you Chairman for allowing us this moment to have a memory about a great man. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask councillor Joe Watkins or a representative from the Liberal Democrat Group. Ah councillor Watkins, thank you.
Thank you very much Chair. So on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group, Jess, Linda and myself, it is really with great sadness and indeed it was shock when we heard about David's passing. He possessed so many of the attributes which are ideal in a councillor, he's always kind, a friendly hello, offering advice but in a non-aggressive way so that it was always really actually pertinent to the situation, especially as a new councillor, I was always incredibly grateful for him for that. And he had a vast depth of knowledge and about people as well and he knew about so many different issues and topics from the length of his career. He was particularly helpful to me in the fields about transport and rail, which I knew was some things that he knew a great deal about. And he was a true gentleman, he was always unfailingly courteous, always asking about how you were, how your family was, it was always lovely to spend time with him. But my main memory that I will hold with me about David is his storyteller ability. Heaven forbid that you would want to leave the Members' Common Room on a swift exit if David wished to tell you a bit of a story and from all sorts of aspects of his political career, some of these stories may have to remain in confidence, I fear. But the fact that I will never again be 30 minutes late because he wanted just to have a quick word will actually be of great sadness to me from now on and I shall miss him both personally and professionally. Our thoughts go to Steph and the family at this really difficult time. Thank you to Steph Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Paul Pavy has expressed the desire to say a few words, he worked closely with David on Chepstow Town Council amongst other organisations, councillor Pavy.
Thank you Madam Chair. Where do I start? I'm like my former neighbour David, I've never managed to cultivate my prose well enough to become a natural storyteller. I worked hard to do it while it was something that David had in spades. David was my ward neighbour, my chamber neighbour, we always sat together in council meetings, primarily because I enjoyed his company, but it was always the added benefit that he had a bag of sweets in his briefcase. That was, I think that was the quid pro quo because I would always be on hand to nudge him whenever his eyelids began to hang heavy. We worked on local issues together and we spent time socially together. He was more than a colleague, he was a good friend of mine. More than that I think in that David and his wonderful wife Stephanie became almost like surrogate parents to me, political parents if you will. I had the good fortune to meet David and Stephanie very early on when I moved to Chepstow, over 11 years ago now and while I can't quite remember what particular branch meeting we first met, I do remember the warm welcome that I received from David and Stephanie and the other local members at the time. I was young and keen and they probably couldn't believe their luck that they had someone who can now lead on leaflet delivery across the town and if you haven't delivered leaflets in Chepstow with its topographical niceties then you won't simply understand where I'm coming from. However, the more I got involved in local politics, the more David and Steph encouraged me and I'll never forget the evening in 2014 after the Larkfield Town Council by election in Chepstow Athletic Club, where I just scraped over the winning line by a handful of votes, how delighted they both were for me. And not having parents close by at the time, it was as good as having my own parents there that night and I think that's why I felt David's passing more acutely than most. When I listened to the eulogy so eloquently delivered by David's son Spencer a few weeks ago, he punctuated all the wonderful characteristics that made him so popular to so many, his warm, self-deprecating nature, his natural charisma and ability to charm, his rapier wit and sense of humour and I'll add to that with his sartorial astuteness. He had so many wonderful gifts and qualities, but none more so than his ability to tell a story. I've had the good fortune of chair in many meetings when David was in attendance, whether that was at County Hall, having had the good fortune to have a successful businessman like David on my E&amp;D Select or at the gatehouse in Chepstow, but you can never avoid David's anecdotes. Whatever the subject matter and the discussion, David had an anecdote on it and you simply could not help him but let him tell it, even if you had heard it before. Yes, he often had the ability to take you the scenic route to the destination of the point that he was trying to make, however that destination was always somewhere worth visiting, much like the Y Valley that he loved so much and where he is now laid to rest. David was a passionate Welshman despite spending much of his working life outside of Wales. He was proud of his heritage, a man of Gwent, born in Tradega and he relished the opportunity to tell that story, the boy that came good and he certainly did good. A wonderful wife and family, successful career and he made his mark here in Chepstow and in Monmouthshire politically as well. As a long-standing town councillor and county councillor, mayor of Chepstow and chairman of this council. A life well-lived, a life full of dedication, service and love and he accomplished it with humility, good grace and gentleness. I hope when this pandemic is over, we'll have the opportunity as a council family to come together and remember David's life and work, but also that we can take the opportunity to sing some of the rousing Welsh hymns that we were unable to sing at his funeral, something I know Stephanie would really appreciate. So David, on behalf of myself and the rest of the Chepstow Conservative Branch members, it was an absolute honour and privilege to have met you, to have known you and to have called you friend. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you all for those lovely tributes and I hope that we say it on behalf of everybody in this council, that how much we will miss David and we're truly, truly saddened. We do have Stephanie sent in some orders of service for us, so if anybody would like one, just contact me or Linda and we'll get one sent to you. Thank you very much.
Chair, might I just say a word or two, it's Frances Taylor here, because quite frankly I worked very closely with David and I just wanted to say a word and I know the mega group would find it very remiss of me if I didn't say just one word. Certainly Chair, thank you for allowing me to say a couple of words, but I won't repeat what some of the other speakers have said, but it is absolutely true. He was a rare gentleman David, an elegant, warm, charming gentleman and I would certainly say that that's in very short supply generally, his warmth and charm and indeed his storytelling was quite special. But what I will say is for me, David was a great instructor when I first became a county councillor and what I'm really struck by with David is his passion for matters that were outside of his ward but were more strategic to the whole county. David led, you know, our transport agenda when very few other people were interested. It wasn't sexy to be interested in sustainable transport, but David was interested and he really cast the way for where this council is now. He was an amazingly good friend to the mega group, mega action group on rail and I know they were genuinely devastated by his passing and, you know, what a great shame with the progress that we've made that David won't be able to see that, but having spoken to Steph, I do hope that Steph will be able to see the legacy of what he left behind and of course he never ever spoke without talking about Steph and his family and I do know that for me, David did a much wider job than just being a ward councillor, he was a genuine, genuine man of the county and I and the mega group are certainly exceptionally grateful to the way he brought credibility and success to the transport agenda long before it was as popular as it is now. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you all very much indeed. Right, can I have any apologies for absence please? I've received some from councillor Brian Jones, do we have any other apologies for absence? No. Just don't in the chat box if anybody's put anything in there, no, okay. We do get very good attendances at these remote meetings. Declarations of interest, does anybody wish to declare anything now or we can take them as we proceed to the meeting? Okay. Chairman's announcement and receipt of petitions, I do have a petition to acknowledge, it's from councillor Alan Davis and it's regarding flooding at Castle Lee, so I just acknowledge receipt of that for you councillor Davis, I will pass it on to the appropriate department. Thank you. I would like at this point to just say, well this time last year we could not have possibly imagined, when we left the chamber last March, that we'd be sitting here this year, having gone through so much, people have suffered, we've all suffered so much and been very patient and, you know, we've all got held together very, very well and I would like to just say that we couldn't have imagined these changes. It's absolutely incredible that we're sitting here, we've got a nearly full council. It's impossible to describe how much dedication, care, commitment and sheer hard work has gone on throughout this past 12 months in Monmouthshire County Council and beyond by everyone, in all the various organisations, frontline workers, people working throughout the county and beyond and I wouldn't like to try and name individuals or organisations, it would be impossible. Everyone has played a part in caring and supporting each other in so many different ways, so I want to say thank you, say well done to the Monmouthshire team for caring so much for one another and I always think they're two simple words, but they are said with much sincerity on behalf of all of us in Monmouthshire, to all of you. Thank you. And we now have, we move to the reports and the first report is the council tax resolution and revenue capital budgets for 2021-22, councillor Phil Murphy's going to introduce this for us, councillor Murphy.
Thanks Madam Chair and the government went out to consultation in January with a draft budget proposal. This was consulted on widely despite the restrictions imposed by the pandemic. It was scrutinised by all select committees, it was on the council's website with an online feedback form, I did a video blog, we consulted with a wide range of interest groups including the trade unions and schools budget forum. There was also a county-wide virtual budget livestream event. There are almost 300 responses, all of which have been reviewed and key themes of which have been included in the report on our engagement work and that will be made available on our website. Many were concerned about the proposal to increase council tax by 4.95% despite a favourable position, a provisional settlement for the second year running. Indeed, instead of being at the bottom of the list, our settlement was much more supportive. However, we were still at the bottom on a per capita basis at £1,067 per head, way below other councils. The favourable settlement was nowhere near sufficient to meet the pressures that we faced of some 10.07 million and despite finding 3.7 million of savings based on provisional settlement, we needed the 4.95% increase in addition to using 748,000 of the reserve that we've created last year for such situations. This budget looks to recognise in full all pay and pension related pressures in schools, demands on adult and children's social care and ALN, pressures in the passenger transport unit together with those in waste and recycling services and where we are looking to sustain key service delivery, investment that ensures that homeless people are provided adequate support, advice and accommodation in their time of need, the ongoing commitment to recognise and value the contribution made by the workforce and to ensure we pay as a minimum the real living wage set by the Living Wage Foundation. Since the draft budget proposals were put out on consultation, cabinet and senior officers have continued their work to finalise the budget proposals and in so to do so, cabinet has acknowledged the consultation responses and the scrutiny of the proposals. Some further flexibility has been created as a result of updates to our treasury budgets for next year and clarification around transfers into the settlement, together with reductions in pressures caused by confirmation of specific grant funding for next year, most notably the homeless pressure and where confirmation of Welsh Government funding has been forthcoming. We also identified more savings from a delay and review of the turning the world upside down commissioning strategy and adult social care. This flexibility and headroom has enabled the council to invest in its digital design and innovation and data analytics capabilities, invest in the council's procurement capability achieved through proposals to collaborate with Cardiff Council, investing as I said to ensure that the apprenticeship roles are paid as a minimum in line with the council's pay scales and therefore in line with the ongoing commitment to pay in line with the real living wage set by the Living Wage Foundation each year. Investment contributes towards the need for further resilience around Covid recovery, investments to develop local outreach advisory and direct support aligned to the pupil referral service in reach and place in secondary schools, recognise adjustments to sleep-in allowances in social services, maintain our social care case management system ahead of future transition to an all Wales system. On the capital front, the council is looking to recognise the one-off costs to enable the move of the SRS data centre from Blaine Avon to Newport, add further increased investment into flood alleviation, the creation of a £1 billion match funding pot to support grant applications that require an authority contribution, most notably with significant active travel bids that have recently been submitted to Welsh Government, a further use of capital receipts to support some of the further investments in the revenue budget and where such costs are associated with service reform. Beyond these further investments, we did not need to use the reserve funding and were able to reduce the proposal that is before us today in relation to the increase. and were able to reduce the proposal, that is before us today, in relation to the increase in council tax to 3.89% instead of the 4.95 originally envisaged. Cabinet regrets that insufficient funding was forthcoming that could have resulted in a smaller increase or indeed none at all. The final settlement in fact introduced no further funding to local authorities across Wales. There are however risks on an ongoing basis that we have not been able to quantify and will have to be accommodated if they materialise next year. The main one is in respect of the pay awards for local government and teaching staff. Any pay awards subsequently forthcoming settled in Wales will be need to be met. If necessary, through the headroom tax we created in our general reserve as part of our return strategy last year. Although it looks as though at least most of the income losses and cost pressures relating to the pandemic will be met from the Welsh Government's Covid hardship fund, there remains the risk that the ongoing losses and pressures might not be fully funded. The recent announcement from Welsh Government that they will be investing a further 206 million for the first six months of next year is welcome. And we will be working through this to ascertain whether we feel this will meet anticipated pressures resulting from the pandemic. Specific grants are also not clarified and there is always risk surrounding children's service pressures in particular going into next year. Clearly uncertainties remain going into next year and these will continue as we move forward and look towards 2022, 23 in the medium term. We call on Welsh Government to ensure that Monmashe and local authorities in Wales are adequately funded and that such assurances are provided at the earliest opportunity. Godly, Madam Chairman, amongst the recommendations are that the final settlement be noted, that the revenue and capital estimates and the appendices are approved, the town and community council and police precepts are acknowledged for next year, that the council tax increase is set at 3.89% and that results in council tax charges applied across Monmashe for the next year in line with the tables contained within the report. And Madam Chairman, can I take this opportunity finally to thank Peter Davis, Jonathan Davis and their teams for the considerable effort that has been put into this process in the most challenging of circumstances? And I have mentioned there that Madam Chair, most of the recommendations, but there is that further one there that, just pull up now, it's just the final one in 2.7. And that is that the officers that are mentioned in there, the revenue shared services be authorised under section 2 to 3 of the Local Government Act 1972 to prosecute and appeal on behalf of Monmashe County Council proceedings before magistrate's court for the purposes of applying for liability orders in respect of council tax and non-domestic rates. I added that bit because it wasn't included in my presentation. So with that, Chair, I'll hand it over to any questions.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Do we have a second for this report?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Greenland. Okay, so we have opportunity now for questions and comments. Councillor Petroni, you've raised your hand. I'd like to invite you to speak.
Thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Murphy for his summary of the Conservative budget. Unfortunately, it's a depressing budget from the Conservative administration. Once again, a wasted opportunity and squandered a great chance to really improve the lot of people in Monmashe. Instead, they've chosen to hammer them, which is absolutely baffling, given the Covid pandemic. They're still increasing council tax by 3.9%. And if you look at their cumulative impact, they've acknowledged that that will have a negative impact on socio-economic groups within this local authority, many of whom have experienced particular hardship during this past year. I'm thinking of the just about managing families who are now going to have to stump up an inflation busting council tax increase. And the kind of serendipitous, kind of hidden increase in fees and charges, which is nowhere near inflation, way above inflation, 2% generally across the board, raising £143,000 for the council. And in there, again, in their socio-economic impacts, the council produced, the administration produced themselves, have acknowledged that any increase in fees and charges for services will have a higher impact on households on the lowest incomes. They are, they quote 9,000 households in Monmashe who live below the 60% median income, 10% of people who live in households in material deprivation. And the fees and charges are focused on adult social care, which is going to hit adults in the social care setting. The leisure services, which, once we come out of this pandemic, people, we want to get people back out. We want to get people in our leisure centres. That will also include, I presume, our museums, as a cultural fees and charges and extra fees and charges in our school system. So once our children are fully back in schools and hopefully in the new term and the next academic year, the parents are going to be stumping out more cash because this Conservative budget who just wants to hammer those families even more. There's no acknowledgement of the pain and stress that they've gone through. And I heard councillor Murphy note, through gritted teeth, it must be said, the level of Welsh Government support for Monmashe. But it's worth reiterating that they've increased the budget settlement to, that the council was expecting, which was 0% to 3.9%, which is equates roughly to an extra £3.7 million. This is in addition to the extra £4 million the Welsh Government provided to cover the council's losses, some of which was in the, it's an investment portfolio. And I can go on amount the level of support the Welsh Governments get, given to Monmashe and its residents and its businesses. And what have the Conservatives decided to do? Increase taxes, hurt people even more, punish them even more. And it's something we, we cannot vote for. And we really, there are many areas to save, I feel, and the Labour Group feels. For example, last year, we spent £3.8 million alone on agency fees. Now, some of them are definitely warranted, but need to pay nearly £4 million on agency fee in one year. Oh, that's eye watering and I won't be told that there won't be, there are not savings there. In my opinion, they've cut staffing to the bone, have had to over rely on agency staff to cover the, to cover the work, which is deeply disappointing in a false economy. But I know in the cumulative impact study on appendix nine, I believe, they did analysis of the impact on particular households with particular incomes. And it's, it's interesting to note that the households that experience the less financial impact of this budget from the Conservatives are the people earning over £40,000. Anyone earning below £40,000, you are paying more proportionately than the richest in this county. That's their own figures. Why? Their council tax hit on you and their fees and charges, which is a hidden way of getting more money out of you. That is something we cannot support. We will not support the poorest in our communities paying the price of Conservative support of richer people. And it's really deeply disappointing. They had a real opportunity to tackle poverty and equality in this council, in this area. And they decided to do warm words, but not do any action. And it's deeply disappointing, Chair.
Councillor Easton, can I invite you to speak next?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members, and my condolences as well to the Devi family. I'm amazed at this budget. I'm amazed at the, the lack of support that this, the Conservative body are giving to the support that's been given to them by the Welsh Government. They're forever kicking the Welsh Government for not doing this, that and the other. But over the past 12 months, there's been massive support from the Welsh Government, not just Monmashe, but to other councils. There's been 600,000 extra meals for kids on free school meals, 750,000 pound money to tackle some homeless levels of homelessness, £100,000 on childcare provision and a lot more, three and a half million for adults on social care. So the, the budget they've put forward, that you're putting forward, you suggest is being scrimped and saved, right? But there's a lot of money being put into, into this county from the Welsh Government. And I think that should be really realised and accepted as being a fact. And it's to decide to take something wrong here, and decide to increase the council tax to 3.95 after initially going to 4.9, I think is a kick in the teeth to a lot of people on lower incomes or middle incomes who are going to be asked to cover this, particularly at this time, and a lot of them are actually losing money. But to come back to some of the aspects of it, we see that a lot of money is being spent on agency workers, three and a half million quid. Why are we applying, why are we having to employ so many agency workers? Where are they employed and what is the actual necessity for them? I have picked up that some employers have taken redundancy and within two months are back on pay, back on the books, on twice the pay they were getting previously. I don't have names, I don't have jobs, but these are the things which are coming forward. So I think that the custody of the, of the budget is not being well, well kept by this Conservative Cabinet. And one thing which really, really amazes me, I came to this council in 2008. It's now 2021. In 2008, you started a policy of running down Caldercot Castle. You tried, you tried to get, you got rid of the incumbent caterers. You brought in caterer after caterer after caterer. You lost money, off lost money, over money, over money. You then tried to put on events on like Little Mix, you lost money, you lost money. Why cannot you get your act together and support the place properly? You're now looking to charge people for parking their cars in the castle. Caldercot Castle Country Park, 55 acres, is a public immunity. The public should not be penalised about the pay to park their cars there. I, quite frankly, over 13 years of Tory rule, they've decimated Caldercot Castle. It's now a shell of itself. In the last number of six, six, seven years, you emptied it, emptied it of all its stock, which disappeared, we don't know where, we've got no account for it. There's been no accountability for the place and I blame every single member of Cabinet at the time, plus those who are not in at the moment, for creating an absolute mess of what is there. It's time you put your back, got your act together and done something positive for it. And I take this from the top, from the leader down, right through councillor Greenland and others who have been involved since 2008. You cannot start charging the people in Caldercot and around for parking in their own country park. That really, that really gets it, gets in my, in my throat. And I think that should be, should be wiped off straight away. Other than that, I can't support this budget on the basis that you've come forward with, with the points you've made, when we can see that there's a lot of money being seemingly wasted on, on, as I say, agencies. I leave it there, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Murphy, would you like to respond now or would you like to carry on and respond at the end?
I'll, I'll come, come back at the end in the second half of the day, Chair.
Lovely, thank you. Councillor Fox, invite you to speak next.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chairman. And thank you, Phil, for presenting the budget, but not just that, the work you've done all the way through the year together with your officers. And my thanks also to Peter Davis, Johnson Davis and all of the teams and budget managers throughout the organisation who've done a sterling job as usual. And I'm quite astounded that the opposition leader, Dmitri Petruny, hasn't make, make some, some, some statements about our budget, but he offers no alternative. Once again, no alternative. It's easy to throw around cheap words, but with no alternative, it's a bit rich, really. And, and I'd just like to perhaps, and I, I've said these, shared these figures already this year and we hear a lot about what Wales Government has given us. Hang on, let's just remember that everything Wales Government has had over this past year to deal with Covid and the like, right, has come from Westminster. 6.6 billion pounds has flowed through to, from Westminster, including what will be coming next year, plus another 740 million pound consequential, which has just been announced. Plus a whole raft of other funding which will be coming from Westminster to help us in local authorities through the levelling up agenda. But let's just put that to aside for a minute. And let's just remind councillor Petruny and his merry men what the, what the Labour Government have done to treat Monmashe. We, as Phil said, £1,067 per capita. We very rarely move above a thousand pounds. That's the lowest, whilst we may have had a slightly better settlement this year, it hasn't moved us off the bottom. 3.9% of very little is very little. I've said that every year because it's a fact. The, our immediate neighbours, right, Torvine, £1,559 per person, Labour Council. Labour Council Newport, £1,534 per person. Blaina Gwent, £1,730 a person. Cefili, Labour Government, there, £1,608 a person. Welsh average, £1,471 a person. The lowest nearest to us is the Vale of Glamorgan, who have about £200 more than we do. Even if we were funded at that lowest level, right, we'd have nearly £18 million a year more. The Welsh Government expect Monmashe residents to take up to 30, about 35% of what the, to contribute, 35% of the monies we need to fund this council. We do not want to have to put up council tax. And if we were funded fairly, as I've just illustrated, we would be reducing council tax. And it's a bit rich, Dmitri, sharing what we're doing when his Labour colleagues all around the country are whacking council tax up when they've got massive balances in their banks and they're having the figures I've just shared per person to deliver services. I would ask you to go and make those same points to your neighbouring Labour authorities and ask them why they're doing what they, what they're doing. Well, they've got healthy reserves in the bank which could help and support their communities. We have not got the luxury of large reserves. We work extremely hard to be able to manage the services and provide some of the best quality services on such a limited budget. It's with a heavy heart we have to ask for council contribute, council tax contributions. I wish we didn't have to level council tax at all. There needs to be a far better system of funding local government and that is a fact. And I will continue to fight for a different settlement which recognises the issues we have. Because Wales Government, Labour Wales Government would be more than happy to see Monmashe and smaller authorities like us, low funded authorities, go to the wall, while they can preserve the rich, the fat cats across the rest of Wales, which they seem to treat very fairly. So, Madam Chairman, I won't accept a lecture again from Dmitri, who can't even be bothered to bring forward an alternative budget. What sort of opposition is that? Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Right, councillor Armond Watts, you're next to speak.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Phil, for your little brief there. I'm sorry to say, I didn't catch your online presentation, so I apologise. But I do have some questions, Phil, which is in relation specifically to council tax and council. I always ask these questions, Phil, every year. So specifically to do with council tax collection, what, you know, have we increased the council tax collection? Does he anticipate with the advent of Covid that that collection rate will stay the same? Also, I wanted to know, and I've asked him again, so he should have the answers really, because I ask him probably four times a year, what the, how much is he actually written off in council tax? Has that increased? Because those are significant signs that obviously people are struggling. And specifically, if he can answer that question, which bands has he had to address most of all? Is it, for example, band B, band C, band D, or I suppose probably not band I? The other question I've got is specifically about, can he tell us? And it has been, had a fair amount of coverage in the local media, how much money the Welsh Government have actually given the local authority to pick up some of the losses it's incurred from that £21 million gamble on Spitty Park? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Howard, just Howard next, please.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. Talking of lack of action and just words, I think the leader of the opposition ought to look in the mirror as he's nothing of use to offer anybody, only criticism. And I suppose, as the leader said, he has no view of neighbouring Newport's plan tax rise of 3.7% or that's a kick in the teeth for residents there. And I think, Madam Chair, we all regret having to put taxes And I think, Madam Chair, we all regret having to put taxes up. But the fact is that many people are even more reliant on the services we provide than they were before Covid. And I'd also remind the opposition leader that his vote group voted against the 0% rise that we brought forward in 2013, 14, and in fact wanted to to put up council tax by 3%. And we were criticised at the time, but, you know, that, that 3% at the time, I worked out over the intervening years with inflationary rises, that would have put another 50 pounds on, on top of the council tax level today. It probably would have cost every household on band D in Monmasheer another 500 pounds. So I I don't take his criticism at all. So yes, while we regret, regret the decisions we have to take, I certainly won't take any lessons from him about the stewardship of the public money.
Councillor Roger Harris, next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 16th time that I'll be saying this, and probably next year for the 17th time. But this time, Peter's really gone to town, our, our leader of the, the council. He really has got political this time. I remember in years past when we had this debate about how terrible the Welsh Government is on our settlement, and we're always down the bottom of the pile. I specifically asked, the inference is, Peter, leader, that the Welsh Government doesn't like the fact that Monmasheer is a Tory council. And you have said to me, no, that is not the case. But this year, you haven't said that. You've, you've actually said just the opposite, that Monmasheer has been singled out because it's a, a, a Tory council. And that's, that's a new one. And you point out that the Vale of Glamorgan has got the next lowest settlement. Now, there's something about the Vale of Glamorgan and Monmasheer County Council that sets us apart from the, the valleys, don't you think? We have got pockets of deprivation, but we haven't got anywhere near the levels of deprivation in the, the authorities that surround us. And again, after 16 years of being told it's the lowest settlement, we've still got no idea why that is the, the case, apart from the fact that we're a rural county. We've got an MP that's always been a Tory MP, and we've always had a, a Tory AM. Why aren't they working on the fact, with the relevant authorities that they can be, to sort out, you know, if we are that badly done by here, why? As I said before, we've been told it's not because we're a Tory council, apart from today, when we're told we are a Tory council. And the Welsh Government is set alongside, as a, as a bad authority, alongside the, the national government that spent 11 years of austerity getting us into the situation that we are. Never, ever any mention of the fact that local authorities have been hammered by the Tories for 11 years and got us to the situation where, where we are. Council tax doesn't have to go up because we're in exceptional circumstances with the Covid virus. All sorts of programmes are no longer being run or being able to be run. There is money to be saved. And from the point of view of, let me point out, Abingdon, any Labour-led town council has managed, because of time-sensitive projects not having been able to be implemented, has not had to put up council tax for the struggling people down the bottom of the pile, which is the ones that we should all be worried about. Us, the ones of us that have got sufficient money, again, never have to worry. But everybody that is down the bottom of the pile, let's put it that way, is affected by council tax. We don't need to put it up. And, you know, I'm fully behind what Dmitri has been saying. And, you know, the group is, is in a good position to not agree with this Tory budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Bob Greenan, next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, I won't repeat what Peter has said, the leader has said. Our thanks to Phil and the team for all the work that they've put in. Every time we come to this meeting, it's a repeat of the previous year's comments from the Labour Group. And as Peter has said, where is the alternative budget that they have presented? It's incredibly easy to criticise the payments that, and, and the, the situation that we find ourselves in. It's much more difficult if you're going to criticise the charges that we make to give us real alternatives of where they could be. And I I did notice that at the cabinet meeting, which is the proper place to discuss this, frankly, because a lot of decisions are made there, and then if they have to be changed by this meeting, they can be. And councillor Petruni has the opportunity to speak at that meeting. Not a single word did we hear from councillor Petruni at that meeting. He had nothing to say. And yet he comes to this meeting, as do his colleagues, and they grandstand because this is the opportunity when they can say something. But they say the same thing every year. But what they really fail to do is to give us an alternative to the way that we are proposing to go. And that's the problem. That is the problem, that in these difficult circumstances, it is incredibly difficult to put a balanced budget forward that doesn't hurt some people. We would much prefer to be in the position where we didn't have to do any of this. And as councillor Fox has said, if we had the settlements of other authorities, we wouldn't have to do that. The fact is that the Welsh Government will not look at the formula that they use. Because if you take, if you give to one, you have to take from another. And each time the subject of the formula comes up, they say, ah, yes. But if all of you can agree through the, through the committee that you're going to change the formula, we'll change it. What council is prepared to give up money so that they can provide it for another? The fact is, we need strong government in, in Cardiff Bay, who are prepared to make the decisions themselves that ought to be made to provide fair funding. But they won't do that because their Labour colleagues say, we're not giving up money so that Monmasheer can have ours. And that's why we haven't got a fair settlement. And let's just remember where most of the money goes that we spend. Most of it goes on the payment of wages for our school teachers, for our staff here at Monmasheer County Council, and for all the people that provide the services, like bin collections and everything else. That's where our money goes. That's where the majority of it goes. And we pay the same rates as other councils. Actually, we pay better rates than some councils because we go and pay the higher living wage to all our staff, and now, in this budget, to apprentices as well. So why, if those are aware of the money is being spent, why should we so be deprived? Bliner Gwent getting 60% more per person than we are. Is that because of deprivation? No, it's not. It's because the Welsh Government won't take their responsibilities to put a fair settlement for all councils in Wales. Instead, they will fall back and say, well, if you've all agreed amongst yourselves, we'll do it. Well, of course, that's not going to happen. Of course it's not. So we end up with the same, the same meeting every year with members of the opposition saying exactly the same things, but not actually being prepared to come forward with a proper budget that is costed, that is an alternative to the one that is being proposed. And I'm afraid that that is the situation.
Chair, can I have a point of clarification, please?
So, thank you, Chair.
Personal explanation.
Councillor Petruni, a personal explanation?
It was to correct the Reverend or Deputy Leader, I don't know what to call him. Can I just say I'm a bit uncomfortable that the priest who presides over our meetings then becomes extremely political? We might need to look at that. But my actual explanation is that the Deputy Leader alleged that we haven't come forward with budgets, and we have. And they've always been ignored, so he's wrong on that. So I'll just correct him. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I don't think that's the case. And if we're going to talk, if you wish to bring up the subject of religion, which I didn't bring up, but I think it is the, the point of being, from a Christian point of view, it is absolutely right that I should stand up here and say what I think is right, because I am talking for the people of Monmasheer and.
Chair, and is this a soulmate? This is bringing religion, I'm just saying.
We shouldn't have religion. I just don't, not very comfortable with that, and there are Christians on this side as well.
Councillor Petruni, I stop, please. Councillor Petruni, you've made your point, it's been noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am quite comfortable in sitting here as a priest and saying the things that I am saying. And I fully respect that there are people on all sides of this chamber who have very moral views. They may be Christians, they may not be. That's not an issue that is of importance here today. And so I'm going to move on from that. But I could not support councillor Petruni or any of the Labour Group in what they have said yet again this year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you for the clarification. Councillor Richard John, next, please.
Thank you. I wasn't going to contribute this afternoon, but I, I didn't feel very comfortable sitting here, listening to the opportunism and the crocodile tears from, from the leader of the opposition. The way he was talking, it was as if we, we should be rejoicing that we've been offered some, some crumbs off the Welsh Government table. We're, we're still the, as councillor Fox said, still the worst funded local authority in the country. And he, he gave us those, those figures, and they're, they're really quite shocking, just the, the level of disparity between our local authority and other local authorities just, just neighbouring Monmasheer. And, you know, if that is the, if that is their agenda, that they, they think that there's, there's an argument that poorer local authorities should be funded to a greater level to help address the levels of deprivation in those local authorities. How come nearly 25 years into a Labour government in, in Cardiff, we're not seeing any difference? How come Wales is actually poorer than it was 25 years ago? Throwing money at a problem doesn't make that problem go away. And I, I, I heard the, the question from councillor Harris as to whether is, is this discrimination against us because we're a Tory-run council? And I, I don't think it's, it's as simple or as straightforward as that. I, I just think that ministers in Cardiff Bay, I just don't think they understand. You know, people like Mark Drakeford, who are, you know, members of the metropolitan elite in, in Poncanna, I don't think they understand rural Wales. They haven't got any representation in, in, in the countryside. That's, that's the whole argument about some of those restrictions they've, they've brought in recently in, in the agricultural industry. They, they don't understand rural Wales. And of course, we face significant additional pressures here because of the geography of the county. So unlike some of our neighbours, we can't just have one tip in the middle of the county because we're a large rural area. We can't have primary schools that are three-form entry that you would find in some of our neighbouring local authorities, where you've got that, that density of, of population. So you're able to provide services for a greater number of people within a smaller locality. So delivering the same services in Monmasheer comes at significantly greater cost, yet we're being funded at a significantly lower level. I think that's, that's grossly unfair, and it, it really needs putting right. And I, I'd really urge the, the Labour Group to, to work with us. They've obviously got connections within the Labour Party. They should be exploiting those to help Monmasheer, to help their own residents argue the case for better funding for our local authority. So that's what I would urge the, the opposition to do. And on, on the point about car parks, we are consulting about the, the, the future of the car park at Caldercot Castle. But, you know, if we want to pursue the, the goals of our climate change declaration, if we want to make significant investments in walking and cycling routes in, in the Sevenside area, then we need to consider what goes with that. And car park charging at Caldercot Castle is, is part of that. But you look at all the other car parks in the county, we're not proposing to increase any charges there. So there's a bit of cherry picking going on there. I completely endorse the, the comments of my colleague Bob Greenan, who I thought made an outstanding contribution a few minutes ago. But thank you very much to, to officers and to councillor Murphy for, for all they've done in bringing this budget forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor John. I'm going to bring in Debbie Blakeborough, and then I'll ask councillor Murphy to sum up. Councillor Blakeborough.
Oh, thanks, Chair. Interesting conversations. I mean, first of all, I, I would have to agree with councillor Fox in terms of the funding formula. It's not fair, and it's not fit for purpose. And, and it is true that in terms of Monmasheer, we are a bit of a Cinderella when it comes to handouts from Welsh Government. And, and, and that is true, and the figures show that. However, I was disappointed by the budget. And now we're agreeing with councillor Petruni on this, that I was surprised by the 3.9% increase. When looking at Covid, I, I'm first of all, I was just wondering, have we made any savings? So, you know, I'd be interested to know how much we've saved in terms of travel expenses, buildings, heating and lighting, the buildings that aren't being used at, at the moment. And furlough payments, they've made salary savings. So there's got to be some savings there. I don't accept that we've had to pay out more money because of Covid, because we have had money from Welsh Government and from Westminster to help us through this. Standard of living is, is probably about 1.5%. And we know because of these difficult times, there's been lost businesses, lost income, lost jobs. And people are really struggling financially. And it feels to me as if just for one year, if we could just give the people of Monmasheer a bit of a break, sort of a time to take a breath, I won't be supporting the increase. I think we should forego it this year. I'm, I'm aware that TUCC, Community Council, in response to this situation, and knowing people are struggling, they're looking to reduce their precept. So I'm uncomfortable about us increasing it this year. And I, when, I, I mean, I glanced through the budget, but I do believe we have made savings, and that wasn't made clear. So based on that, as I say, I won't be supporting the 3.95% increase. I think it's harsh times, and I think we just need to give people a bit of a break, time to ta- take a breath, and then plan on for, for next year.
Councillor Williams, it would appear that you, you've tried to raise your hand and wasn't able to earlier. So I'll call you in, and then councillor Murphy, I'll invite you to sum up.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, I've got a problem because my computer won't log into this meeting, so I have to do it on the iPad. And probably councillor Fox, who uses his iPad quite regularly, will understand the pains that that causes. We've heard so much nonsense today around the edges about Welsh Government, this, national government, that. To be fair, I mean, a lot of it, like we heard the phrase grandstanding. I'm guessing there's a, there's a, there's a need for a bit of grandstanding, there's an assembly. I'm guessing there's a need for a bit of grandstanding, there's an assembly election coming up, people are looking to become candidates and stuff, I understand that, but this probably isn't the place for it. Council John describes the First Minister as living in the leafy suburbs of Poncanna, a metropolitan elite. You know, the leafy suburbs of Mitchell Troy probably don't quite resonate with Gwysylland to the Cansel and Essie Hill. But I can understand him not understanding about those areas because there's no school left in any of those. Of course, we would now need to go there. A question I'd like to ask about the budget itself, going back to Council Howes' little point about not raising it in 2012, again, just before we had the election then, so maybe next year it'll be zero. But with the amount of money that we've lost from that speculative spotty leisure park, I do get berated by Council Murphy on retail parks, I think I'm right now as a leisure park. With the money that we've lost from that, will we be changing our policy going forward not to be invested in such things and maybe investing in some social housing where we could actually get some money back? Thank you very much for letting me in, Chair. And I'm sorry that I raised my hand in the wrong room. I'm used to doing it in the other part of my day job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, Council Taylor, I see you've put your hand up, but I do want to end this discussion now. So if you have a question or a quick point to make, I'll allow you to speak.
Thank you, Chair. So it's really a comment on, I have no interest in replaying these, you know, this debate, which does happen every year, I'll agree with that. But my question is, so our group, we had an opportunity to ask some questions of officers. So our group did ask some questions, some of those Council Blakborough just raised. And I still don't have a clear sense of the answers. So for example, we did ask, for example, what were the sort of savings we were making as a council on, you know, travel and expensive, because that clearly, you know, no one has been travelling terribly far. We understand that obviously now officers have been going out and doing their jobs and where that requires travel, then absolutely. But there have been periods of the year where there has been very little, except for essential travel. We tried to understand those. So I would just make the point, and I think it's an important point to make. And obviously, we are more hamstrung in this, in that we don't have, in the same way, those incidental conversations. It would be very difficult to come up with alternatives without the granularity of information about each and every one of our budget headings. And I just wanted to make that point really, Chair, that actually that hasn't proved as straightforward a process as it might be in other times. Thank you, Chair.
Right, Council Murphy, would you like to sum up now, please, and then we'll go to the vote?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just having trouble and blocking my mic. Just run through as much as I can of the points that have been raised, Chair. Do them in reverse order, I think. As regards Newport Leisure Park, we haven't lost any money in Newport Leisure Park. The businesses that have temporarily not opened, only not open because of Covid. The rents that have been lost there have been reimbursed from the, or at least in great part have, and we anticipate will be subsequently in total from the Welsh Government's Covid hardship fund. So there's been no losses there. And there's a considerable amount of interest from existing tenants and potential new tenants there. So I don't think we need to alter anything there. The losses that have been anticipated weren't. The point about furlough, furlough is not a recurrent issue. So you can't look to furlough from an ongoing point of view. And we're talking about next year's budget, not this year's. And council tax write-offs, in 2019, there were 168,240. In the current year, so far, they're 36,313. The council tax rate has been held at 99%. Long term is slightly more than that, 99.6. We did have a little bit of a dip at the early part of the pandemic, but that is coming back. With regards to the fees and charges, yes, we have got in the budget that there is an increase of 415,000 from that. But that did include 252,000 from additional recruitment income from mainstream ALM provision in other schools where we're getting money from other authorities. So the actual amount that we anticipate getting from the public on that is not that great and only of course where people are actually utilizing those services. As Richard John said, Caldercot Castle, we will not be putting the car park up this year. And a lot of the additional expenditure that's been spoken about was Covid-related. The Covid-related expenditure has been carried off by the Covid hardship fund. Council Petroni talks about the extra 3.7 million, but he fails to note that the 0% that we originally had was a modeling assumption only. It's never been used in building the budget. And he knows that, but didn't choose to say it. The 3.89%, yes, it is following a very good settlement. But as you know, it wasn't enough to cover those unavoidable fees and charges. So, you know, Cabinet and senior officers have had a very, very difficult job this year. Yes, we've saved some money because of the pandemic. And some of that will be ongoing. We've captured it. And those figures are included in the budget papers. So, Madam Chair, I do recommend the recommendations in the report. And I think at that stage, I'll probably leave it to the vote.
Thank you very much. So we'll just wait for the voting app to come into the chat bar and we can all vote on this agenda item. It has now appeared in the chat bar. Always goes in the middle as well. Can we use either?
Yes.
Yes. Members, you can use either. This happened in a meeting recently. There's also a voting application appeared in the middle of the screen, so you can use whichever one you like.
For some reason, the voting bar hasn't come up on my chat side, so I don't know what's happening there.
And it's not appeared in the middle of the screen either?
No, it's nowhere on my screen at all. I am having a few problems with my chat bar and stuff. The chat bar's there, but there isn't anything for voting as it would normally have the normal layout. So I don't know what's happening there.
Have you scrolled up there? Because it might have slipped down. Try scrolling up to make sure that you haven't missed anything that's loaded down.
Right, there's a couple of members can't get their voting button.
Yeah, no, I've done that. Yeah, that was a good suggestion. But yeah, I've scrolled up and down.
Council Taylor is not sure whether her voters worked or not. I'm happy to take them verbally, but we need to ensure that Council Taylor hasn't already voted.
Yeah.
We need 22 for it to be carried. It's being carried. So whether you wish to vote now?
Well, I'll verbally say that I'm voting against it.
Okay, we'll go with that. It's clearly been carried. Thank you, Members. Thank you, Council Murphy, and thank you to Peter Davis and his team. It's obviously been an extremely amount, an awful lot of work on top of everything else. And we do appreciate officers working from home and shielding and all the different circumstances to produce the budget as well. And these circumstances is very much appreciated and thank you for all that you've done. And we'll move on now to the next item, which is the Treasury Management Strategy. Council Murphy, over to you again.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And the purpose of this report is to approve the Treasury Management Strategy, including the minimum revenue provision policy for 2122 financial year. The report summarizes and highlights the key areas relating to the strategy alongside those areas of key implications and this resulting from it. So in the recommendations, and this is a policy that comes before us every year at this time. So Members will be familiar with it. And it's also been through the Audit Committee. And I believe Philip White, the Chair of the Audit Committee, is on this call and will probably make some comments to the discussion at the Audit Committee. So the recommendations are the council approves the Treasury Management Strategy. That's all set out in Appendix One, which includes the 2122 Treasury Management Policy Statement, the Minimum Revenue Provision Policy Statement, the Investment and Borrowing Strategies. We're also asked to approve the potential indicators, which are in Appendix Five. And they'll be used in the performance monitoring of the Treasury function during the year 2122. And it's also recommended the Audit Committee continues to review the Treasury Strategy. We decided that we will continue to do that in the Audit Committee at the last meeting. And we'll be receiving and scrutinizing the mid-year report and the year-end report and also scrutinizing the Treasury Policy and Strategy before passing it to council for approval. So the draft Treasury Management Proposals were presented to Audit Committee on the 25th of February as part of its dedicated responsibility to scrutinize the draft proposals. They did debate it and I don't know, Chair, whether Philip White wants to come in at this point. But with your permission, I'll ask him if he wants to contribute.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. White.
Good afternoon, everybody. The Treasury Management Strategy is the subject of the report, which Council Murphy has introduced to us today. This was put to the Audit Committee on 25th of February by Jonathan Davis, who is, I believe, the Acting Assistant Head of Finance. Mr. Davis explained in his introduction to the Audit Committee that the report is not a report on past performance, but sets out the strategy for the financial management in the coming year. The committee receives separately regular outheard reports which provide performance information. In his introductory remarks, Mr. Davis referred to the need to manage investments and borrowing in the context of the current low interest rates available. I'll just say a little bit about the discussion. Members asked about the council's investments in pooled funds, which are managed funds, which cover a variety of assets, which have tended in recent decades to deliver better interest returns than would be available from cash deposits. Mr. Davis reported that the strategy includes a proposal to increase the limit on such investments to 10 million. This is not a target, however, but it gives more flexibility to Treasury Management. Members also asked about the balance between borrowing and investment. Mr. Davis, this Jonathan Davis, of course, informed the committee that borrowing is used to fund the capital programme. But considerations which Treasury Management need to take into account are the very low interest rates available on short-term loans. He quoted something like 0.08% on six-month loans and the current policy of internal borrowing, which prioritizes using current revenue over taking out external loans. Nevertheless, the authority needs to closely watch developments in market rates to ensure that it is not disadvantaged by any changes that may be coming along. Mr. Davis was able to confirm to the committee that Table 75 in the paper and in the paper today shows that the Treasury budget that is interest and cost payable, less interest received, is set to reduce up to 2425 as a proportion of total revenue, subject to any changes in policy, of course, which might be made subsequently or in later years. Other matters raised included the frequency of reports on performance to the committee and the effectiveness of the authority's Treasury advisers. Following the discussion, I was able to conclude that the committee had carried out the recommendations requested of it, which were to consider and endorse for onward circulation and approval by full council the draft Treasury Management Strategy 2122, 202122, and for the Audit Committee to continue to review the authority's Treasury activities on behalf of the council by receiving regular Treasury Management reports. And I hope that account is useful to the council today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. White, and for that comprehensive report for the review and for all the work that you and the Audit Team undertake on behalf. Thank you very much. Council Murphy?
I think I'll leave it up to any questions at this stage, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have, it has been seconded by Council Maureen Powell. And there was another offer in the chat bar. Thank you, Giles. So, Council Petroni, I can invite you in to speak now. You've indicated you wish to speak.
Thank you, Chair. I think the Treasury Management Strategy is wrong. I'm not going to vote against it, but it's shortsighted and misguided. The borrowing strategy is based on the premise that we shouldn't still, we shouldn't fix in long-term interest rates because uncertainty of the financial situation. But actually, if you look at all the broad indicators, bond yields, both in the UK and in the United States, and rates and predicted inflation rises, they expect a strong recovery and inflation to at least increase to 1.6%, if not 2% in the coming financial year. Would it not make far more sense to fix long-term borrowing rates now? Now, we all know the short-term revenue pain for long-term revenue benefit. Otherwise, we're going to be looking to secure long-term borrowing later down the line, a year, two years down the line, at much higher rates. And that is not wise, given that the pent-up demand, people are going to start spending, whether they have it or they don't, just to get out. Inflation is going to skyrocket and in a short period of time, and so are rates. So is it not wise to fix in as much as possible, as much as our revenue could take, long-term interest borrowing? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Petroni. Council Powell, did you wish to speak at all or was it just a second to the item? Sorry, I should have asked you.
It was just a second motion. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Chair, do you want me to come in on that?
Yes. Nobody else has indicated they wish to speak. So would you like to respond and sum up?
Yes, I can do. And as far as long-term interest rates are concerned, we will be looking at longer-term interest rates and fixing where it is appropriate to do so. But we, and it's in the Treasury Management Policy, we use internal borrowing as much as we possibly can. We use short-term borrowing as much as we possibly can and get rid of longer-term borrowing with shorter-term borrowing where it's prudent to do so. So we're constantly looking at our borrowing requirements. And as I say, if we do see the need and the wisdom of locking into longer-term borrowing, we will. That is all there within the Treasury Management Strategy. So I understand where Council Petroni is coming from, but I think he's worrying unduly.
Did you want to come back in, Council Petroni, or are you happy with that?
I'm not happy with that. The Treasury Strategy doesn't really make that clear. It makes it clear that it's going to continue internal borrowing, as you've said, Phil, which has been a wise and prudent strategy in the last few years. But now with the indicators improving, as I've just described, rates are going to skyrocket, Phil. And we're going to be caught out looking to fix long-term borrowing, which we're going to have to do with school building programme. There's no way of avoiding that unless you can stop building schools. So fix it now. Fix it before inflation starts to boom. Otherwise, we'll be fixing it and I'll be saying this in a year's time, going, why didn't we fix it? And we're paying a higher borrowing cost.
Thank you. Council Murphy, would you like to sum up now and then we'll go to the vote?
I've had a request from the senior officers to come in and add a bit to that. So can I ask Peter Davis to contribute?
Yes, please do.
Thank you, Chair. So just to respond further, just to supplement what.
So just to respond further, just to supplement what Commissioner Dimitri, sorry, Commissioner Murphy's responded to in terms of Dimitri's, Council Petroni's question. I can appreciate some of the references that he's made, but it's one of the reasons, I guess, why, together with our in-house capability around Treasury Management, not just with Jonathan Davis, but a small team that we have there. But we have a longstanding relationship with our Treasury Advisors, Arling Close. There's been extensive discussion that's led to this point, and in terms of bringing the strategy forward, and quite a lot of debate in terms of the approach that we take. It's important to note that the interest rate curve pushing out over the next year, two years, and actually slightly beyond is remaining very low and very flat. And if we just reflect back on the budget and obviously the challenges that we've been facing to bring down costs and introduce saving, one of the ways to do that is obviously to take a level of balanced risk around our Treasury Management activities and actually to lock in to those shorter-term, lower rates, interest rates. That's what we're looking to do. It's been an approach that we've agreed with our Treasury Advisors. They are very comfortable with it. We are very comfortable with it. It will be monitored on an ongoing basis to cancel the, cancel the Petroni's point. And if at any point in the future we need to reassess our position, we will, of course, do that. But I think, I think we've got a good level of comfort certainly around the next 12-month period. That's for certain. Of course, the medium-term outlook, as always, is less certain. It's one of the reasons as to why we bring a midterm review of the Treasury Strategy back into Audit Committee during the year. And we're going to have another opportunity next year to reassess our position. So hopefully, that's just useful, both for Commissioner Murphy, but also to respond to Council Petroni's question.
Chair, can I just ask a quick technical question, if I may? Technical.
Very quick.
When did you develop this strategy, Peter and Phil, in terms of when did you finalize this document? Because it was last week or two weeks ago, the bond markets in the US skyrocketed because of interest rates. I mean, it's happened really quickly on fears of inflation. It's what's happened in a real short period of time. So if you finalized this paper two, three weeks ago, you're out of date. So I'm just wondering, when did you finalize this document?
So this document was finalized right on the cusp of the papers being circulated, the agenda being dispatched for the Audit Committee on the 25th of February. And to your specific points in terms of what we've seen in terms of those pressures within the markets, there is, and as is always the case, ongoing discussions with our Treasury Advisors. Those discussions have been had. We very much feel that that bounce that we've seen is going to pull itself back. It will continue to be monitored, and as always is the case, you know, we will continue to assess our interest rate risk as part of our Treasury Management risk on an ongoing basis through the year.
Thank you very much. Council Murphy?
I think that wraps us up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll have the vote up now, please, Nicola. It's interesting. I used the one in the middle of the screen this time. You have a choice.
Chair, just on that, which one am I meant to be clicking?
You can use either.
Right.
Either. Yeah, and you can do it repeatedly. You can do both. It'll only be recorded once.
I still haven't got a bar. I don't know what's happening.
You can give a verbal vote if you so wish. It's been carried, but it's 34 at the moment, and obviously you can't see it. There's 34 and three against, and one abstentions at the moment. So it's clearly been carried. But if you want to have a vote, we have.
Yeah, I'll be voting for on this. Thanks. Yeah, I'm going to have to have a lesson after this as to. I normally do have a voting bar, so I don't know what's happening. All right. Thanks, though.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, members. We'll move on then. It's Council Murphy, item 5.3, Capital Strategy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and this again is a regular occurrence. And the purpose of the report is presenting the Capital Strategy for Approval for the year 2122, and to approve the addition of grant-funded budgets to the 2021 Capital Programme. So the recommendations are to review and approve the strategy, which is in Appendix One, and the capital budgets financed from external grants, which is in Appendix Two. The Capital Strategy sets out the longer-term context in which the capital, in which capital investment decisions are made, and demonstrates how the Authority takes capital investment decisions that are in line with its priorities, give consideration to both risk and reward and impact, as well as properly taking account of the stewardship value for many prudence, sustainability and affordability. The capital plans of the Authorities are inherited and inherently linked with the Treasury Management activities it undertakes. And therefore, this report is brought alongside the Treasury Management Strategy that we've just discussed. Consideration will be given in future to combining both the strategies into one report to Council, so it eases things up. But the main considerations arising from the strategy, as I said, are shown in Appendix One. Again, officers are here to answer any questions, Chair, but I don't think I need to go on. This report is quite detailed, and if there are any questions, then John Davis will be able to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Murphy. We have a second. The Council Giles Howard, thank you. Council Howard, did you wish to speak, Council Howard?
No, thanks, Madam Chair.
Fine, thank you. We have the raised hand facility in the chat bar. Doesn't appear to be anybody who wishes to comment or ask any questions. So it's been moved and seconded. You happy to go to the vote, Council Murphy?
Yes, I could, Chair.
Nicola, can we have the vote in up, please? Now the rest after this, Council Murphy.
Yeah.
There we go. I have noticed if you use the one in the middle of the screen, once you've used it, it disappears. Right, we're in the chat bar. 334. Nobody's against it, one abstention, so that's clearly been carried. Anybody wish to, you know, provide a verbal vote, or are we all happy with that? We've got 34. Four now and one abstention. So it's clearly carried. Thank you, members. So we'll move on now to appointment to Y Valley, sorry, to Y Navigation Advisory Committee, Council Paul Jordan, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is a committee of the Environment Agency and is responsible for the management, maintenance, and improving the navigation of non-tidal rivers, the Y and the L. Although the Y Navigation Order is silent in relation to the length of time a member can be appointed to the Y Navigation Advisory Committee, there is Cabinet Office Guidance and a Code of Practice for Ministerial Appointment of Public Bodies. The guidance and code makes it clear that you should not appoint for more than 10 years in total, unless there are exceptional circumstances, and you should not appoint for more than three consecutive terms, unless there's good reason. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Councilor Anne Webb for all her work on this committee. She's been on the committee for more than 10 years. But we now get to the point of the, or the purpose of this paper, and that is to appoint a new representative of Moab County Council on the committee. And to that end, I would nominate Councilor Jane Pratt.
Thank you, Council Jordan. Thank you very much, Council Jordan. Do we have a second? I think we will require a second for this proposal.
I'll second it, Chairman, Morin Powell.
Thank you, Council Powell. Do we have any other nominations for this position? I see, Council Petroni, you have your hand raised in the chat bar. Was it to propose?
Yes, Chair, we propose Councilor Tony Eason. Given his work around National Resources Wales, we think he'd be a good person to be on this committee.
Thank you. Do you have a second then?
Chair, can I ask a question, please?
Shall I second?
Sorry, who was that seconding? Sorry.
Can I ask a question of Councilor Jordan, please?
Yes, you can.
The committee, how often does it sit, Councilor Jordan?
It sits twice a year.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry, I didn't.
Not particularly onerous.
Didn't catch a second for Council Eason.
Yeah, I'll second Martin Grokett.
Thank you. Do we have any other proposals, any other nominations for this position? Right, we have two nominations, so we will need to go to vote on this.
Chairman, just for clarification, will the vote be done by Councilor name? Okay, great.
There we are. It's just appeared. Thank you, Nicola. Right, that's clearly been carried. For Council Pratt, thank you very much for agreeing to do that. Thank you, Council Eason, for also for offering to do, carry out this position, but Council Pratt has been nominated on this occasion. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question at this point regarding that appointment? What is the position of executive members sitting on these committees rather than lay members?
I'll check with our monitoring officer now.
No objection to Council Pratt, but I think it should be clarified about that.
I'll ask our monitoring officer. Yes, please.
Hello, councillors. Good afternoon. Matt Phillips here, Head of Law, Monitoring Officer. From the correspondence I've seen about the position, there's no stipulation that it needs to be a non-executive member. And in accordance with the Part C of the Constitution, the delegated power for nominating appointments to external bodies lies with the Council. But again, there's no restrictions set out within that part of the Constitution. So there's no issue with Council Pratt's appointment to this board.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much.
Chair, I'm going to have to leave the meeting now. I've got another appointment.
All right. Thank you, Council Evans. Next item on the agenda is the Constitution. So Council Jordan, again, please.
Thank you, Chair. The Constitution is the document that collates and consolidates the plethora of laws that both directs the Council's actions and also empowers it. It sets out the structure of the Council's democratic functions and decision-making bodies, delegates legal powers to the most appropriate level to enable effective and expedient decision-making, sets out the procedural rules that must be followed. And for this meeting, of course, it deals with matters of contract and finance or for the access of information. It also contains the codes and protocols that councillors and officers alike must abide by as public servants. Our Constitution was last approved in December 2017, and since then, there have been council decisions, law changes and role changes that have served to amend how the council operates. Therefore, it is necessary for the council to consider a reviewed and redrafted document. The process has taken place over a long period of time, interrupted somewhat by the pandemic, and it has been open for members and officers alike to examine and submit proposals for changes. It was briefed at the Democratic Services Committee in January and a member's seminar in February. Madam Chair, with your consent, I'd ask if Matt Phillips could come in at this stage, because there have been some further amendments to the Constitution relating to the Local Government Elections Act that wasn't dealt with at the member's seminar.
Thanks, Councilor Jordan. Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to mention to members, obviously, that the timing of a reviewed Constitution is concurrent with the Local Government and Elections Act that came into force in January, but there's a series of commencement orders coming out now. So since we last spoke about this, and indeed since the agenda's come out, there's been further regulations that relate to things like family leave for councillors, and there's been a couple of other amendments made to the Constitution to reflect how remote attendance will work in the future. So just for those that have been in discussions with me previously, there have been updates, and I will continue to update the Constitution with those legislative changes as we move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Phillips.
So, Madam Chair, I take you to the recommendation in the report, and that's that full Council approve the reviewed and updated Constitution.
Thank you, Council Jordan. Do we have a second for that? Council Trigallan, is that a second?
Yes, Chair, a second, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Right. Does anybody wish to ask any questions, given that this has been through a very lengthy process? It's been over a year. It's being reviewed, and I would like to thank Matt Phillips and his team, because they worked very hard on this. They've reviewed it during all these difficult days that they brought us with it. Members have been advised, informed, and asked to input during this last 12 months. We've all had ample opportunity to actually submit our suggestions. There's a very comprehensive report with it, and it even lists all the suggestions that have been put in and those that weren't able to be put in, and the reasons why, with other members' seminar. So I'd like to see this go into the vote, but we do have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You were cut off at the very end. I assume that was an invite for me to talk. Only very briefly, I wanted to thank Matt and again the team for all of the work, and particularly for removing the proposal to, for members' call-in of planning applications to committee to be considered by the delegated panel, and also apologize for a rather crutchy email I sent to him and others on the matter a few weeks backward. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as Council Jordan mentioned, this is an ongoing process. And if anybody wishes to submit anything to be looked at in the future, Democratic Services will always look at it for us, and it's something that's going to be reviewed constantly. So have we got any further questions? Council Pratt?
Yes, I'd also like to say thank you for the amendments to the Constitution and for retaining the right of county councillors to refer matters to Planning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jordan, you happy to go to the vote on this?
Yes, I'm content with that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Have the voting application, please, Nicola. Thank you. I think we could say that's clearly been carried.
Yeah.
36.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Council Jordan, and thank you again to our monitoring officer and his team. Thank you very much. Right, we now move on to the motions. We'll take the first motion from Council Petroni. Council Petroni, please.
Thank you, Chair, and this motion is just welcoming the Welsh Government's financial support to this council and to its residents and to its businesses over the past year. And every year, we hear from the Conservative Administration lamenting the Welsh Government's And every year, we hear from the Conservative administration lamenting the Welsh government. And councillor Fox, today, I think it's the first time I've ever heard him say basically that the Welsh government will be comfortable with the council going to the wall, or is that exact words? Which I do not think is the case. I do not think any Welsh government, whatever political spectrum, would want to see a Welsh council of any control go to the wall. Because the people who pay the price for a council going to the wall, as Peter Fox thinks is an acceptable thing to say, is the people and the most vulnerable. Or maybe he's, I'm not aware of a Welsh council going to the wall. Well, certainly since I've been a councillor. But I am aware of Conservative councils in England going to the wall because of the extent of cuts that's happened in England, Conservative-controlled Northamptonshire, for example.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, point of order. This is nothing to do with the motion that is before us. He's going off the point. Can we ask that he addresses the motion, not his political points of view, please?
Chair, Chair, if I may, Chair, it's a point of order. I would ask you, who is actually chairing this meeting?
A point of order is what is an alleged breach of the rules. And this is not a breach of the rules, so I will ask you not to come in and just interrupt like that.
Chair, could I raise a point of order?
No, not at this moment. I'm going back to councillor Greenland. He's raised a point of order and I'm going to ask councillor Betroney to keep to the motion. Right, what was your point of order councillor Eason?
My point of order was that, sorry Chair, my point of order is that councillor Fox has the right to call upon a point of order. They should do it through you, not just burst straight in without getting your permission. Thank you, Chair.
Carry on, please councillor Betroney.
Thank you, Chair. It does relate because it's about council finances and what the Welsh government provided for Monmouthshire local authority. I'm sorry councillor Greenland doesn't recognise that. Because if we didn't receive this financial support, so from the Welsh government, then this council would have been struggling and possibly at the brink of going to the wall. So that's why it's perfectly within the remit, Chair, and I'm sorry, you don't even see that. So Chair, on this, we, this is just welcoming. I mean, the Conservatives should welcome the amount of financial support Monmouthshire's received from Welsh government. They should be happy that we've had above Welsh average settlement. They were expecting zero percent. That's what the Conservative administration were planning for. They got 3.9, an extra 3.7 million that the administration were not expecting. That is just on the revenue settlement side. We've also received, as Monmouthshire businesses, so I say we, 35 million pounds from the Welsh government. It's the most generous business grant programme in the UK. It's come through Monmouthshire, some administered by this council, yeah, brilliant. Some of it directly by Welsh government, but it's supporting the businesses when they really need it. And we should be welcoming that, not lamenting that. The council, as I hinted to by my colleagues, have experienced massive losses due to the pandemic. Leisure centres, for example, dropping revenue in their car parking charges, a drop of revenue in there. And the Welsh government have stepped up and put four million pounds to cover those losses. They've also given huge amounts in the hardship fund to cover additional costs that this council incurred due to the Covid pandemic. And this should all be welcomed because actually it benefits Monmouthshire residents. And I'll just give you an example of what has been funded by the Welsh government. Contrary to what was happening in England, the Welsh government paid instantly extra money for free school meals to also cover holiday times, which England, Conservative-controlled England, weren't going to do until Manchester United footballer Marcus Rashford intervened and forced the Conservatives to U-turn. So we got money and those, money to those poorest in Monmouthshire because of a Welsh Labour government. We had an extra 755,000, £100,000 to tackle homelessness. Extra £100,000 to tackle, to help with childcare provision. An extra 3.6 million pounds to help us in the extra presses around adults and social care. We've had a million pounds to cover the losses we've incurred from our properties and our investments. All the investments we paid in our investment committee, the Welsh government have stepped in and helped us out. So if Peter Fox was right, and he want, the Welsh government of any colour would want a council to go to the wall, they wouldn't have put in all this money. We wouldn't have put in all this money to support Monmouthshire and its residents. Because it's not about whether Monmouthshire is controlled by Labour or Conservative, it's about Monmouthshire residents. And I'm sad Peter Fox wants this council, would want, thinks the government would want a council to go to the wall because residents pay the price. And that's deeply upsetting that councillor Fox thinks that way. But I do admit, congratulations might be in order because councillor Fox might be the Conservative candidate at the end of this month for Monmouth MS. So I appreciate it's election year councillor Fox, so you have to make your points. But this is something we should celebrate. Is it ameliorating the per capita? No, but you can't do that in one year. It's just not financially viable. You can't ameliorate a per capita uplift to the extent where that would be needed to match, say, the veil or the average in one financial year. It'd just be too high. But we've got 3.9% above the average across Wales and we were expecting zero. So rather than lamenting, downgrading, saying the council, the Welsh government wants this council go to the wall, which it absolutely does not, no one wants that and no one of any right mind would want that. It should be welcomed and we should be pressed, pressing the Welsh government, well, the new Welsh government, whatever political spectrum it is after May, to continue that kind of uplift of financial support for Monmouthshire and its residents. It's supported our businesses, it's supported our residents, it's supported our most vulnerable residents. And this should be welcomed, and that's all I'm saying, Chair.
Do you have a second for your motion? Is that councillor Judith Thomas? I see he's raised his hand in the chat bar. I think you need to unmute councillor Thomas.
Yeah, yes, I second it. And I just want to speak briefly to the motion as well, please. Yes, I second it. I speak wholeheartedly in support of councillor Betroney's motion. You know, throughout this Covid-19 pandemic, Welsh government's provided support on a rapid basis. Not only financially, but in terms of leadership. And certainly speaking to people on the ground, people in my patch appreciate that far more than some of the things that have happened across the border. I feel saddened that there is a constant whinging and whining, in a sense, from the Conservative side about Welsh government. On this occasion, they have given a windfall, which is significant, 3.7 million. It's not an insignificant amount. And certainly, I listen to this concept of us working together. I would like to see MCC working more closely with Welsh government in terms of what's going on. Certainly in terms of my ward, and the vast majority of people in my ward have welcomed this support. And my ward covers many businesses in the town centre in Abigavenny. And they've been very grateful for the support that Welsh government has provided via MCC, which has kept the businesses going over the most difficult period of trading that they've ever experienced. And without that, many businesses, most of them independent businesses in Abigavenny, would actually have gone to the wall. I still feel unhappy, and it's been mentioned earlier on and it's been brushed aside, but I still feel concerned about the investment down in Newport, 21 million, by this Conservative administration at Smithy Fields. You know, apart from the Covid epidemic, it just seems foolhardy that they actually invested in one single property portfolio. And certainly my grandmother was a farmer, always said, you know, never put your eggs in one basket. And certainly in my patch, people are saying, why is this money being spent when we need more social housing? Or at least some social housing. And also, why can't we have improvement of facilities, for example, in Bailey Park in Abigavenny? So I call upon this administration to support them. Welsh government's been extremely generous in the settlement, pre-Covid, and are obviously ongoing with that support. I know Peter Fox's point that the money comes from Westminster, but so is the case for Scotland and for Northern Ireland. And in effect, obviously, the Barnett formula funds Welsh government in a particular way. And they then fund MCC. So you know, it's an ongoing chain, but I commend the motion to the council. Thanks.
Right, thank you. Councillor Peter Fox next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You won't be surprised that I won't be supporting this motion. But before I just go, I just need to clarify a couple of points. First of all, I'm not saying that the Wales government would want to see this council go to the wall. But it seems very strange that they are allowing a funding situation to continue year after year, which is putting excessive strain on authorities like ours through lack of action in altering a formula which they could look at or they could commission an independent review of to give us some fairness going forward and some hope for a sustainable future. Our reserves are not great and that will not get any better going forward unless they do something about that. But I won't, I won't welcome the motion quite as Dimitri put it there. But I just will share that I've had a very good and excellent working relationship, actually, with Julie James, the Welsh Labour Minister for Local Government. And I've been probably meeting with her with other leaders every week for over 12 months. And I've made the case on formula to her many times. And Julie James is a very good minister and she has, understands the local government situation. So I've got utter respect for her. I was, of course, we welcome a better, slightly better point, or a point, what, 0.1 of a percent better than the average. But you mustn't forget where we have always generally been, right at the bottom. And as I said before, you know, 3.9% of nothing is absolutely nothing, you know. And, and you know, so you've got to get that base, the quantum has to come up for a percentage. Really has the effect that it might have somewhere else. But I hear what Judith said about the Barnett formula. Yes, the Barnett formula does give its distribution every year. But the Covid situation has led to a huge amount of additional monies flowing down the M4. And, you know, it's quite easy to spend other people's money when it flows down the M4. But that was the trouble. Wales government couldn't spend it properly and ended up right at the end of the year with so much unallocated money, which is, was potentially could have been clawed back because they hadn't allocated it. There's certain reason why we had these final statements of monies coming here, there and everywhere. And then there is additional money which has now been allowed to carry over. But I just remind those figures which I mentioned earlier, and these are fresh from the Secretary of State's office only this morning. 6.6 billion pounds UK government has made available to Wales to deal with Covid. So things like the hardship fund, things like, you know, the business support, all of those things have been paid for by UK government. And Welsh Labour acts as an agent on behalf, on behalf of UK government to administer those.
Stop it there councillor Fox, I've got a point.
A point of order, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand councillor Fox's deliberations, but the motion is quite clear. Motion to applaud the Welsh government for the support, particularly financially during the Covid-19 pandemic. Oh, I can't get it, pandemic. Can we respond to that, please? Not just everything else we've heard.
Madam Chairman, I'm responding in a similar way to the motion as Dimitri proposed it. And he didn't propose it in one word as he's written it down there. So I'm responding in the same way, clarifying some points and actually explaining why his motion is incorrect and rather not worthy of our applaud. Wales government are doing exactly what they should have done, is administer monies which was passed on to them to help us through a very difficult period. And they've done that, but they haven't done it very well. And hence we've had lots of money unallocated for a long time. But as I've said, I've got a good relationship with the minister. And I do recognise the work she has been doing with local authorities. And I recognise a slightly better settlement from the finance secretary this time. But I cannot applaud Wales government as if they've magic this money from some sort of magic money tree. They haven't. It flowed down the M4 for the exact purpose that they've distributed it. Why am I going to give them plaudits for doing exactly what they're supposed to do? So Madam Chairman, I will not be supporting this. In fact, if it was to applaud UK government for passing on the money to Wales Labour government to do all of the things in the motion, I would agree to it. But they haven't put that. They're ignoring us a fundamental point. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Right, we'll move on. Councillor Greenland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Fox has said a lot of what I was going to say, so I will not go over that again. As I know you don't like to see things, hear things repeated. But you know, if you're going to tell a story and you want that story to be understood, you've got to tell the whole story and not just half the story. And I'm afraid what we've got here is half the story. Yes, of course, it's true that we've had this money from the Welsh government. But as has been said, that money actually is passported from Westminster. Rishi Sunak gave far more money out than has been ever given before because of the unprecedented need. And Welsh government have brought in these schemes which have helped. And I think actually, just to update the figure, it's almost 40 million pounds has now been passed out to the businesses in Monmouthshire. But that's not all the story. Because the problem is that in the schemes that they have brought forward, they have failed to support thousands of businesses across Wales and thousands of legitimate businesses who have fallen through the gaps of their rules that they have bought in for these schemes. Now, I and the leader have been pressing Welsh government over this issue time and time again. And actually, not just us, I would also like to say that Laura Jones, who is now the South East Assembly Member in the Senate, Laura has also been pressing the point, and I have to say, with some success. But even so, we have found that Welsh government have not been listening. And they haven't made, and the big issue that I would say is that we need a real scheme that is administered from here in Monmouthshire County Council. Because we can see where the gaps in these schemes are. And we can see the legitimate businesses who are going to the wall because they've fallen through the gaps. But unfortunately, Welsh government are not responding to that. And so whilst some businesses have been helped, not all businesses have been helped. And that is a big failure, I'm afraid. And I'm speaking up for those businesses that feel that they have been ignored. And if, I heard councillor Thomas, an Abigavenny member applauding it. But if he wishes to read Wales Online, he will see the reports from an Abigavenny business who feel that they've been forgotten by the Welsh government. And it's, I'm afraid, true for some businesses. Some businesses have been very well helped, but not all. So I'm afraid we're only hearing half the story as far as that. And I'm not going to go into the issue of the settlements because, again, there, we're only hearing half the story. We're not hearing the part of the story which still leaves us so undefunded. So if we're going to tell a story that is only half of it, I can't support it. I will not be supporting this motion.
Okay. Councillor Armond, what's next, please?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I don't know if you, can you see me and hear me all right? Yeah? I should ask really, because I should ask Matt really if I've got a non-prejudicial interest. Because my little business, I've been in business for, I think, 30 years now, you know, was effectively shut down, like all the other businesses in Chichester. So suddenly, we were closed, we were open again, we were closed, we were open again. Had it not been for the packages and the money that we'd received, we would, I wouldn't have been able to feed my family. I know, I can speak confidently and say that would be similar to many other traders that I know, friendly with and, you know, been associated for many, many years. Long-standing local people. Long standing local people scratching a living. And I would like to say thank you to the Welsh government for the support that is given to me, my business and my family. And, you know, you can make that as public record. I'm not sure if it's prejudicial interest or not. What I would say is that Welsh government did produce one of the most generous packages for small businesses of any of the whole nations. I tell you what's interesting specifically is the level of detail and knowledge that Peter has conveyed today. I've got to give him credit for that because he has actually gone back and done his homework. I'm slightly kind of amazed by that. But clearly, his nomination tomorrow night, the Conservative nomination, we all know he's going to get it. On a personal basis, I'd never vote Tory forever and a day. I simply wouldn't. But I would wish him well. Thank you chair.
We note your declaration of personal interest. Nicola will let you have the form electronically, but you are free to vote on this. I checked with our monitor officer. Councillor Growcott next.
Thank you chair. I'd like to speak in support of this motion. And in doing so, perhaps note that I'm interested that the leader of the council is congratulating county councillor Laura Jones for her elevation to the Senate. I passed that on personally as well. I'm sure she's doing a grand job. It's a pity that the actual SM for the Monmouth constituency has not been so forthright in his defence of the people of Monmouthshire. And that's probably why I'm not a member of the local Conservative Association. But it's probably why they're trying to get rid of their SM at the moment. And I wish them all the best of luck with that. And also, good luck to any members of this county council who might be seeking to replace him. It's a difficult job to be a Conservative in Cardiff Bay. Because we have had a succession of very successful Welsh Labour governments there. I've heard the leader and the deputy leader talking about money coming, flowing down the M4, to quote Peter's words. Well, yes, we do get our money from London. But we can't get into a Mad Hatters tea party here. We go round and round in circles. We get our money from London. London gets its money from taxation. Much of that taxation comes from international capitalists. We'll be saying we get our money from President Biden in a moment. We have, in our democracy, a system of government with clear areas of responsibility. And in our nation, we look to Cardiff for leadership in areas of taxation. And increasingly, those areas of responsibility for tax in Cardiff have increased. And I'm thankful for that. Now, here we have a Welsh Labour government acting very clearly to support a nation that has been suffering as a result of pandemic. A pandemic that has killed more people in Great Britain than, as a comparison, any other industrialized country on earth. The British government has failed woefully. And its prime minister should be ashamed of his response to the Covid crisis. When we look to the way that a Welsh Labour government has responded to it, it has the support of the Welsh people. It has acted well to keep the economy afloat and to sustain the Welsh economy. It has brought great succour and relief to many people in Monmouthshire. And people say to me, week after week, how grateful they are for the support that they have received from the Welsh government. Mark Drakeford's response is noticeably more popular among the Welsh people than is that of Boris Johnson among his people. So I fully support this motion. Government has done tremendous job in supporting this county council. And I thank the leader of the Labour group for bringing the motion.
Right, councillor Green, did you wish to speak?
Well, the point I was making was again, we were going off into areas outside of the area of this debate. But it seems as councillor Growcott has now finished, so shall we move on madam chair?
Yeah, it is a very broad topic and we are watching and listening carefully. And it would be helpful members if you kept as far as possible to the motion as it is printed on the agenda. Actually, we've only got two more people to speak now, councillor Roger Harris and councillor Kevin Williams. And then we'll go to the vote because we are veering off on different.
Thank you madam chair. It's interesting that we're told that we're only getting part of the story here. And we should always hear the whole story. One thing we never get from the other side of the council chamber, for want of a better word, is the whole story. As far as the Tory administration is concerned, the UK government can do absolutely no wrong whatsoever. And as I've mentioned previously, the UK government has been in power since 2010, propped up by the Lib Dems, mind you, for five years of that. And basically, money flowing down the M4 corridor has been sharply cut off by the UK government. And as has already been mentioned by councillor Growcott, we all in the UK pay our taxes and it's divvied up according to a particular formula. We should be proud of the fact that with the measly amounts of money that do come down from the UK government, the Welsh government is doing a splendid job, as is mentioned in this motion. And long may it continue after May. And I noticed various messages about, are seemingly getting political this afternoon. But that's just the way it is. There's an election coming up soon. And with a bit of luck, the Welsh government will be strengthened even more after May so that we can carry on doing the good work. And I support this motion. Thank you madam chair.
Councillor Kevin Williams next please.
Thank you chair. I think the support for businesses that have come from Welsh government on the whole has been pretty good. It's been handed out by the local authorities in Wales. And I think Monmouthshire as well have done a pretty good job of spreading that money around. There have only been one or two rumblings that I've heard of people not having access to it or being delayed access to it. I think our chief exec got embroiled in a bit of a Twitter rant with one of them about it and completely defended, and rightly so, the way that Monmouthshire County Council have been developing and putting this out. We've had some political rants during the middle of this debate and we've had some points of order. And it's been interesting to hear, very interesting. But what I would say is, we've had comments made about current assembly members. It'd be really interesting if county councillor or MS Laura Jones actually contributed to this debate and said what she thought about the input the Welsh government have given to business. It'd be really interesting perhaps if she could come in and give us an inside view of it then, if you like. I don't think we need to be worried about elections and things like that. I'm more concerned about who's in there now. And as Laura's online, perhaps she can come in and just give us a little view of what's going on and how she thinks the distribution of money for business has been spread out during the crisis in Monmouthshire. Thank you chair.
Thank you councillor Williams. I think that's perhaps a conversation you can have with Laura when you get the opportunity. We won't go into it in this meeting. We're debating this motion. Right, we've come to the end of the list. Those who wish to speak, oh. I did say I was going to go to the vote after councillor Williams, so.
Chair, didn't I have a right to sum up or has that been changed?
Yes, you will, you will. But that's what I'm saying. We were going to go to the vote. You sum up and we go to the vote. But councillor Richard John, I'll let you and Laura in and then we will go to the vote. We will ask councillor Betray to sum up and we'll go to the vote.
I was going to stand to defend Laura Jones, who was just mentioned by councillor Williams. Although I seen she's now put her hand up. I'm aware she's multitasking this afternoon. But I'll let Laura come in and she's put her hand up.
Why did you feel the need to defend her? I didn't attack her.
Because I thought it would be, in fairness to Laura, she has been attending a number of assembly committees today, which may have contributed to her contribution.
Can I ask for a point of order on this? Just a chairman point of order. Should Richard John declare an interest, given he works for councillor Laura Jones as an MS?
No, no. Thank you councillor Jones, councillor Laura Jones.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry, I've got a couple of computers on at the same time as we've just outlined, sorry. Yes, well firstly, thank you very much for the kind comments from members across the floor. It's very kind of you. I concur with everything that Peter has just said and other members, Bob Greenland particularly, because of all the work, the hard work that he's been doing ensuring, but they've both been doing ensuring that all the money that is coming from the Welsh government is going to the right places in Monmouthshire. They've worked extremely hard and in the Welsh, in the Senate, it is well recognised how well Monmouthshire County Council are doing. And in fact, they have been exemplary and used an example of good practice and how they're delivering for the people of Monmouthshire. So well done to them, is what I'd like to say. Yes, we're getting money from the Welsh Assembly Government. We are. We don't dispute that and we welcome anything that they give us. But the money, as has been pointed out again and again, is coming down the M4 road for that very reason. So credit is due to the UK government too. And I know Dimitri finds it very difficult to praise the Conservative government. But they do deserve a lot of praise in this regard. So I just like, I won't rehash all the arguments, as I know chair you don't like that. But everything has already been said that needs to be said. But in my opinion, there's still a lot of businesses, from what I'm seeing from my email inbox, that are missing out and have missed out during this pandemic, that shouldn't have missed out. And it's taken a lot of fighting, the Welsh Assembly Government and raising points in the chamber in order to get the majority of businesses that now do have support to have that support. It has been tough to get it. It wasn't perfect, as Dimitri likes to sort of pretend that it was. Welsh Assembly Governments have done a lot, but it's because of the actions of the people across the chamber in the Senate that it is as robust as it is now. So it'd be nice to hear some credit for the Conservative Party in that respect as the official opposition. But I thank everyone for their contributions and I think everything's already been said. But thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. And I'm sorry that I can't speak more, but I'm quite a busy lady at the moment, as you can imagine, trying to juggle the both. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Right, thank you madam. This councillor Betray, would you like to sum up now and then we'll go to the vote?
Yes, thank you chair. Congratulations Peter Fox. Look forward to who knew the leader of the council will be. Just want to set on record. Just heard what councillor Laura Jones and others have said about London, about London money flowing from London. They do recognise that Welsh people pay tax, right? That goes to London. So it's not like it's free money not coming from Welsh taxpayers as well. They pay heavily as well to get that money given back to them in effect. And the Conservatives seem to not understand that. There is a difference between how the governments have administered the sub financial support, contrary to what councillor Fox and others have said. But I appreciate councillor Fox has an election to fight. Is the only example, well, the example I can give which is the most pertinent is the free school meals one. Welsh government immediately provided that money to all councils, including Monmouthshire. And I'm just giving the figure for Monmouthshire. And that's why they do deserve to be applauded because it wasn't argued over. And they gave it immediately for in holiday provision as well. There was no argument, there was no debate, there was no press attention because it was done by the Welsh government. The Conservative government in England did not do it. It took a public campaign from an English superstar footballer to embarrass them to do it. So I dispute councillor Fox's, oh, it's, you know, everyone should thank the London Tory government and that there should be basically no difference. The Welsh government are just doing what they should be doing. Well, no, actually, there's been a huge difference to how the governments have responded to the pandemic and who they support and who they don't. And that's why I put, we should applaud the Welsh government. Because when it's come to the crunch, when our most vulnerable children in this example have needed the money, we didn't quibble, we put the money down. Boris Johnson needed to be forced. Thank you chair.
Has muted. Right, can we have the voting app please Nicola when you're ready? And we'll have a 10 minute break when we've muted. Right, we have the results. We have 27 against 84, no abstentions. So the motion's been defeated. So it is now 1626. 10 minutes please councillors. Thank you Nicola.
Nicola, can you hear me? Nicola?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh fab. Do you want to drop me a message? Because this is still being livestreamed. Right, it's just about me getting my voting thing up, that's all.
I'll drop you, I'll give you a call.
On my mobile?
Yeah, what's your mobile number? Oh no, don't read it out. Message me your mobile number, okay.
Nicola? Hi, Nicola? Nicola?
You're on mute Nicola.
Thanks Laura. Nicola? Nicola, hi.
Hi Councillors Wendy, this is still being streamed, so if you want to send me a private message.
Okay, I've got it back on now, my screen froze, but I've managed to vote, so I've got it back online.
Thank you members, welcome back. Right, we'll move on now to councillor Jo Watkins' motion, councillor Watkins?
Thank you very much Chair, and I hope everyone can hear me today. Good afternoon, Council. I don't think any of us can underestimate how the pandemic has changed our perspectives on life at the moment, and has really highlighted how much we should value our caring professions. But also, as we move out of the pandemic, we risk also really remember and support the people who carry out vital roles in our communities without being paid to do so, and I'm talking about our carers, our people who live at home and still look after their loved ones. In Wales, the 2011 census indicated we had 370,000 carers, an ONS survey in 2019 put that figure at 487,000 carers, and every year, 123,000 people become carers. Now, these people do this out of love, they don't do it out of a sense of needing to be paid or being recognised in that respect, they do it because it is the right thing to do, they wish to look after their loved ones. I began doing some work with different people who are carers prior to the pandemic, and I attended the Alzheimer community support groups, I also met face to face with elderly parents of now adult children with learning difficulties, and also with many parents of children who have learning difficulties. And that work led to very similar conversations, in that what do those people need, what can we do to support those people? And the main thing that came out of those conversations was that they really needed respite, the ability to take a break, they do it for love, but they still need to be able to have a bit of time off every now and then. They also needed support, they needed people who would understand what they were going through, and someone to talk to, and they also needed the ability to live, they needed to actually have enough money coming in through the door to actually function as families. And since the pandemic, I've also been in lots of phone contact with people, particularly in this circumstance, in terms of my casework, it's been adults catering for their elderly parents, and these are people who often have had to shield, because they have had to keep themselves safe so that they can carry on their caring responsibilities, and so they have to risk not allow their relatives to be at risk from the virus. And a lot of the conversations I've had more recently is, when will they get their vaccines? And I'm hoping that the rollout of that will be improving very soon for those people who are carers at home. And we also need to reflect on our young carers, and in Monmasshire, apparently, there are currently 230 young carers aged 8 to 18, and these young people make an enormous effort at looking after these family responsibilities. It's interesting to reflect that carers save the Welsh economy 8.1 billion pounds a year, that's how much would have to be spent if these people weren't doing this without a paid job. Now, many of you know that I have been working closely in Caldecott's Food Bank during the pandemic, and it has been disturbing to me, the amount of people that we have seen coming to the door, who are genuinely struggling to make ends meet. I was greatly relieved that the Chancellor of the Exchequer extended universal credit, the uplift of 20 pounds, and that's going on into the future, that will make an enormous difference to many people, we were rather dreading that as the food bank, if that was going to be a cliff edge for people to fall off. But, the carers allowance, which is a tiny sum of money, 67 pounds and 25 pence, sorry, I lost that bigger than, a week, that received no such uplift, it's the only benefit to have been kept so slow. And some of the people who've come to the food bank have been carers, people who are in that responsibility, and so I'm asking us as a council to support our carers. I know we do already have a great project underway, the Monmasshire Carers Project, and it has a valuable resource, but we do need to actually make sure that we reach as many people as possible to give them the support that is possible. And so, in my motion, I'm requesting specifically that we stand up for carers, we do more to support them and we try and build a more caring society as we emerge from the Covid-19 pandemic, and I would like us to ask the leader of the council to write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer and the Secretary of State for Work and Pensions, and urge them to raise the carers allowance by 20 pounds a week immediately, in line with the increase in universal credit. And then I would also like us to put out a communication to unpaid carers and organisations to encourage them to claim the carers allowance. Council, there are many people out there who do not understand the technical ways of finding out this information, and we need to try and reach those people, we need to find out the hard to reach, and we would like to try and help them as much as possible get the benefits that they deserve, and so I ask you to accept this motion, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a second, do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second it Chair.
I was just going to say yeah.
Right, so that was councillor Tonyson seconded it.
Somebody got seconded, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Right, okay, we'll open that up to debate now then, so councillor Armand Watts?
Is councillor Jo's okay? Is everybody all right, is everybody well, yeah?
I'm coming in, yes, so, sorry, I thought I was going to come in automatically, I forgot to put my name up, sorry, I thought it would come to me as the councillor dealing with it, sorry. I will come in.
You'll have to wait unfortunately.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Now, listen, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to amend this Jo, I think you've done a fantastic job bringing this forward, the difficulty I've got is that there is two elements to this, that whilst the increase is necessary, there is a deterrent in this, and that is that you cannot earn after all deductions over, as you probably know this, 128 pounds a week, and I think that criteria needs to be removed entirely. Also, there is the additional top up which you can get if you're doing, if you can, for example, if you can evidence that you're doing care day and night, so effectively, and it is remarkable, isn't it, so effectively you've got a top of an extra 20 quid for doing 24 hour care, seven days a week. What kind of country do we live in, where we allow that to happen to the people that care for our elderly people, and you know, I've got examples of that in my own home, we're doing it more, it's only going to increase, we heard from, you know, council the other week, that actually the highest increase in employment is actually care work in Monmasshire, so it's very relevant really to the demographics of Monmasshire, so I'm delighted and happy that Jo's brought this up, but I would like to amend it, that when we write to them, we request that the 128 pounds threshold is removed.
Right, can you just repeat that amendment councillor Watts?
So, I'm amending it, I'm requesting that when we write to the Chancellor, that we are requesting that the threshold of 180, sorry, 128 pounds for basically the earnings threshold is removed.
Right, I'm just going to check with our monitor officer about this change to the motion, because we have to be very careful where we accept amendments.
You're on mute ma'am.
Councillor Watts, there's nothing wrong with the amendment, we're just trying to make sure that we get it right, so that all councillors know exactly what we're now debating, so our understanding is in that the final part of the motion with council directs the leader of the council, is it part A that you're looking to make those of the council, is it Part A that you're looking to make those changes to? Is that right?
Yes, I am. So effectively, that we, you know, that the existing-
You're not on mute, but I can't hear you, I'm afraid, councillor Watts.
Can you hear me? Yeah? Yeah, so I repeat it again, would you like me to repeat it again? For clarity, that I'm requesting that when we write, the amendment should be that we write to the Chancellor, we are requesting that the threshold of £128, which is the earning threshold, you cannot earn anything more than that on a weekly basis to qualify for either the £60 or the £80, that is removed. So it allows then effectively all carers to access that based on the existing criteria as a carer.
So my reading of that, councillor Watts, is then, under the council directs the leader of the council too, you're effectively adding a Part C, which is as you've just read it out there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Chairman, may I just ask something on that to councillor Watts? Are we not?
Not at the moment. We just need to deal with this item.
Yes, it's an amendment to the motion, but the amendment to the motion, I agree with the amendment to the motion, but I'm sure as a council, if we're going to write to the Exchequer to ask him that we don't have a cut-off of 128 per week, we need to set a benchmark, because you couldn't say, well, you know, the 128 benchmark has been set for a reason. If we want to raise that benchmark, 128, we're going to have to set out a figure that is reasonable, because, you know, you couldn't say, well, the benchmark's £500 a week, unless you're, you know, I mean, I, of course, that is, you know, I mean, I want to put that point to councillor Watts, that we need to raise it, but the benchmark has to be, we have to have a benchmark as well.
Can I also put, just say, sorry, Chair, that I just want to say, because this may complicate matters, to warn, that I want to amend the motion later on. So is that all right, if that carries on?
Oh, amendment upon amendment.
Lovely. We'll have to get in the queue. We need to sort this one out for councillor Watts now, and get it added to councillor Watkins' motion as an amendment. So councillor Howarth made a point, councillor Watts, is that on what you're going to-
Well, look, I'm not, I'm certainly, if I may, Chair, I'm not, no one in this, Joe, neither myself, are the Chancellor of the Exchequer, but there is a very, can I clear as Joe well knows, and anybody that's looked at the criteria, is a very, very high benchmark that you have to then qualify in at. So for example, you've got to do 38 hours' worth of care to qualify. Now, you know, there are limitations to your ability to earn beyond that. So, you know, that's why I thought it would be simpler, just simply to remove the £28, £128 threshold. Does that make sense? It's not a trick question.
I agree, I agree.
Good suggestion just being made here from the leader. Can you put the wording in the chat bar for us to have a good look at?
No.
Chair, is councillor Watkins happy to accept the amendment?
Well, it's councillor Watts' amendment.
Councillor Watkins, is she happy to accept it?
We still, we still need to go forward and debate the amendment as put by councillor Watts. If it fails, then we go to councillor Watkins' amendment, so it will come out when we debate and go to the vote on councillor Watts' amendment, whether or not councillor Watkins is happy with it.
I mean, I don't know how to put it, I mean, I could make it as fancy as you want, to remove the threshold of £128.
Remove threshold of £128. That would be, that would be a new C, as long as everybody has got a good understanding. Yep? Okay, we've had a second from councillor Francis Taylor, you second that amendment with this additional C added to it, in which case, yeah, we will, we will now debate councillor Watts' amendment.
Chair, do we need a new chat bar for a new list on the amendment debate? Sorry, I'm trying to make this the new Hadforth Parish Council meeting. So could we create another chat bar instead of the other chat bar, which is for the original motion?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, yeah.
Chair, could I ask a point of order?
You may.
Yeah, well, a point of information, are we debating this amendment to add to Joe Watkins' motion?
Yes, yes, as C, if you write C and D, ask the Chancellor to, we remove the threshold of £128.
Lovely, understand.
He's working on putting in a fresh speak function into the chat bar now for us. Now, we've had it seconded, we can go forward. I hope everybody's clear on that. Debate this one and vote on this one, and see what the outcome is, and then we move I think we'll actually, have we got anybody who'd like to start off speaking while we're waiting for the raise hand facility? Seems to be a little delay with that.
Yes, Chairman, I'd just like to go back where I was with councillor Watts with removing the threshold, so.
Would you like to turn your camera on, councillor?
Sorry, sorry, Chair. So if we remove the threshold of 128, which I do agree with, if we're going to write to the Chancellor and include this within the motion, then surely the threshold's put up for a reason, which councillor Watts quite rightly, and Joe will agree with, is, but the threshold, they're going to set some bar, and they've got to set some bar. So instead of wasting this time here, we need to set some kind of level bar here. So, you know, I mean, you just can't say, remove the threshold, and it means then, whatever the criteria is, anybody can-
Yeah, it does.
Do, and so you're after anybody who can-
Anybody, Simon, anybody that's, sorry, if I may, Chair, through you. Anybody that's under the existing criteria, you have to, basically, you have to be a carer for 35 hours a week to qualify. The additional top-up of £20 is if you're doing it for 24 hours. The threshold is so high, yeah, you're not going to be earning much more than that. And that's why I wanted the simplifier. I could have said £400, I could have said £500. The Chancellor could have come back to us and written to us, it's very unlikely, and said, well, actually, I want to, you know, it's £600. But the reality is, you're not doing anything else.
No, you can't. Can I, Mr. Turn the cameras off, please? I wish to speak, or we're getting into a little bit of a confusing situation here.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I just, it's a bit more understanding that probably members just require on the thresholds, because it's just been thrown in into an amendment, which I do, I do understand it's 80%, it's the other 20% making sure that we're going to do this, is, we need to make sure the Chancellor is, you know, I mean, not pointing waste this time, you know, we've got to be serious here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that explanation. Right, councillor Petroni next.
Just completely support what councillor Watts has just eloquently described, and actually keeping it simple by removing any threshold makes sense in two ways. One, it's fairer and recognises the great efforts carers go through to look after loved ones and huge sacrifice their own personal lives, let alone making their loved one having a good quality of life. And we should recognise it as a country, and I'm sorry, totally supporting him on that point. But the second point is administratively, this will save money by removing a threshold, because it requires some sort of administrative bureaucrat to check your finances, check your thresholds. If you earn over that a certain threshold one year, or you might be a freelancer and make your money and you work around your caring responsibilities, which many people are doing, a lot of people going to self-employment and working around their caring responsibilities, they might earn more within a certain month or within a certain year, and then suddenly lose all those benefits, and even though the next month they might lose their job or lose their contract. So it removes a bureaucratic layer by removing a threshold, as well as being equally, equal and more fair. So that's why I totally support this amendment, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Kevin Watkins. Sorry, I beg pardon, I said Watkins. Sorry, councillor Kevin Williams.
Sorry, Chair.
Chair, I think Francis was just before me. Sorry, Francis, I got in there before you then, look, I'm going to answer.
Thank you very much. Always, always nice to be announced, Kevin. I want to very much support councillor Watkins' motion, and also councillor Watts' amendment. I think it's important to note, members, that if you consider that £128 a week equates to a net income of about £6,600 per annum, you can see how low that is in terms of people accessing it. And the reality of the situation is, is that if you are caring for that number of hours, then your ability to, to earn is extremely constrained. What we expect from unpaid carers is, well, it's kind of beyond, beyond what most people are able to give, you know, they perform because they want to in the main, but because sometimes there aren't any other options, they perform, you know, a role which is just quite simply, almost, you know, you can't reward it, there is no financial reward, you know, and it's not about the financial reward, but it is about recognising that the current constraints on accessing carers allowance mean that so many people do not access it, are unable to access it, and that is not what we'd want to see as a council. Because, you know, people are already giving so much of themselves in providing care to a loved one, that sometimes they might not have a huge amount to give outside of that. And so I really thank Joe for bringing this motion forward, and Armand for his amendment, you know, and as someone who does care for loved ones, it is a really hard role, but, you know, at the very least, that we can support our carers in this way, I think, is really important. So, members, I hope that you'll be able to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Now councillor Kevin Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know whether I should declare an interest in this first of all, but my wife works for an organisation providing support for carers in their homes, to give them some sort of respite, so that they can go out and do a bit of shopping, go have a cup of coffee somewhere, well, I don't know, but they can't do that, but, you know what I mean. And at the moment, she's giving support for those carers to actually go out and have their vaccine, which is tremendous. She works for an organisation called Carers Trust, which used to be called Crossroads for the senior ones like us, who go back a bit, it used to be called Crossroads, but they've got a fund as well, which they tap into a couple of times a year, that allows carers to bid in for up to £300, which they can spend on white goods, they can spend it on food vouchers, there's all sorts of things. That's a little bit of extra support that not everybody knows about, and residency in Mammocheer do have that facility where they can dip in. Excuse me, she's just coming to the front door now, and the old ring door bell's going off, it's last weekend, yeah. So it gives carers that little bit of respite, and I think anybody who reads this motion that thinks they couldn't support it, well, I'd be amazed. It's a perfectly good motion, the amendment is fine, and I'm happy to support it, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, and we accept your declaration, you can declare a personal interest. Right, so we have councillor Linda Gappy next.
Hi, I just want to support this motion, but, so just speaking on the amendment, I think we need to be really careful in what, what, what Tony has suggested, or so Armand has suggested, because it'll get muddled up otherwise with attendance allowance, and I think that's why it's capped, because if you don't fulfil the carers allowance and do in that 35 weeks, then you could apply for attendance allowance. And I think we, if there was going to be a change, then we need to be mindful of exactly what that change is, because I think you need to take into account the other benefits if you don't qualify for the care allowance, and I think that might be muddly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I've got quite a lot to say later in support of Joe's motion on the whole, but I certainly support this amendment by Armand Watts, and I think, although it is generalised and could cause problems, it's giving the Chancellor scope to be able to raise it, or to abolish it, or to do whatever. So I fully support this motion. Thank you. Amendment.
Thank you. Right, we'll go to the vote now on the amendment. Please note the comment put in the chat bar by a monitor officer about if there are any further amendments, it would be helpful if they're put into the chat bar.
Chair, can I just say here that I'm not offering an alternative, I just want something taken out?
Well, we're going to vote on this one, and we'll look to see if there are any further Okay, that's clearly carried. Thank you, members. 32 at the moment, 35, okay. Right, so that now becomes a-
Sheila, I'm sorry, I've been trying to put this right, but again, I still haven't got a voting bar on here. I did ring in to them at Greg's Services, so if I can put my hand up in support.
Of course, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Right, so we'll go back to this now, this is now becomes a substantive motion, and we can open the debate on the substantive motion once again. Just waiting for the chat bar to, okay. Councillor Petroni.
Chair, just to say, I don't see anyone's going to not support this, can we get on with it?
Okay, I think I'll allow councillor Penny Jones to speak, because she indicated she wanted to make a comment.
Actually, I'm getting rather muddled, Chair. Is this about the amendment that has just been brought, or is this about the whole?
This is the whole of the motion with the addition of the C, asking that the £128 threshold be removed. So that now becomes the motion which we need to vote on.
Right, okay. Yes, I would, I would like to speak, please, because it is, we would like be removed. I'll explain. I'd like, just first of all, I'd like to thank councillor Joe Watkins for bringing this motion, because it does highlight the plight of carers and the role that they play, the important role that they play, which people have talked about already, so, but obviously, they save the NHS, they save social services, but at great costs sometimes to their own and their family's lives. So, you know, any way we can help them, that's good in my book, and that is why I support, sorry, I've just got to do something, that is why I support the amendment that's just been brought as well. However, so about A, we fully support- well. However, so about A, we fully support A, which is, of course, write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer, no, sorry, the first day, we start, we must stand up for carers, do more to support them and build a more caring society as we emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic. I don't think anybody, anybody would, would argue with that. And then the next day, council directs the leader to the, of the council to write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer and the Secretary of State for Work and Pensions, urging them to raise carers allowance by £20 a week immediately, in line with the increase in universal credit. And Counselor Peter Fox, the leader, is, is prepared to write on the council's behalf, asking for this. And also, of course, then I can include now C, which is in the same letter to ask for the threshold of 128 to be removed. So we totally agree with that. I'd like to try and explain why we feel B, the council resolves to put out a general communication to unpaid carers, as I've, I've just lost it, sorry, it's just gone, to unpaid carers with advice about the carers allowance, how we feel that really that perhaps is unnecessary and perhaps could be removed. And I'll just explain why. Ironically, I received the motions whilst I was attending the Malmesher Young Carers and Carers Strategy Group, a group which is held every six to eight weeks, which many organise, which include many organisations, statutory and voluntary, and representatives of the carers themselves, which is important. This includes GAVO, Mind, Hcclunry, Havel, Building Bridges, MAGIC, Social Services, Digital Inclusion Action Group with the Early Help Panel, and others as well, including dementia support groups and so on and so forth. So it is a very big group, and potentially the aim of the strategy group is to help carers to have a life of their own and to support their ability to care. That's every kind of support, including financial, and is for unpaid carers of all ages and their families. Because, of course, when we talk about carers, we should also include the young carers, who have a huge role to play in maintaining family life. Some of the forms of communication include with these carers, and we're talking pre-pandemic, but we're talking, a lot of these have been enhanced during the pandemic. So there's been, there's, always has been and there continues to be a Malmesher Carers Newsletter, which is published in conjunction with GAVO, with updated information on everything that may be beneficial to the carers and their families. So all financial or social or every kind of aspect is mentioned. There's Facebook, there's jointly app from Carers UK, there are video calls carried out in, from the Malmesher Care Group, there's virtual coffee mornings and meetings, the Gwent Carers Hub, which is available, available for help, and which advises on such things, as I think Kevin mentioned, the small grant scheme, which helps people get white goods, for instance, if they need them. There's Re Engage, which is a companion call, there's local support groups of all sorts, Young Carers Forum, and GP Surgery, surgeries are being trained to support, identify and support all carers. Now, this is really important, because sometimes carers don't want to be identified, but also sometimes they slip between the net. Jo, Counselor Watkins was talking about a group of people who seem to be slipping through the net related to young disabled or, or carers of, of young people. So I must say that the young carers have recently, in the last year, been added to this Carers Strategy Meeting, although they have been looked after all the time, but we brought them all together now so that everybody is under the umbrella. Following a discussion about this during the meeting that I was attending, B caused some discontent really, or some concern, not discontent, they were very happy that a motion had been brought to support carers, but the motion, they felt that every system available is applied to, to communicate with the carers at the moment, and all financial information is given to them. So really, this would be a confusing message to them when it comes in from the council, which does not have ownership of this particular allowance. So they felt that they were giving enough financial advice and that people would have to man phones and it would take up special time, which, you know, is short and precious at the moment. So I did talk to Counselor Watkins this morning about it. I did say that I would put forward this, this motion suggesting that we got rid of and we excluded B. And I've given you the reasons for it. We have done absolutely everything we can. There will always be slippage, but I would like to say that I'm taking a couple of points, especially about MAGIC and Bridges, forward to the next meeting after Counselor Watkins talked to me. But really, we do not need to send out letters at this point. And, and at the meeting, the manager and others there really kind of told me that, and I'm speaking on their behalf. So with Counselor Watkins' knowledge, and to this end, we support the motion without B, as we feel this is already covered. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Do we have a second for your amendment? Counselor Harris, are you seconding this?
No, I'll second it.
Sorry, Kevin, no, I'm not seconding, no.
So we have a second, so we can, we have the Speak Now facility to debate the motion, this amended motion. Counselor Harris.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm really surprised at Penny there, on the basis of what she's just stated there, that it would, it would cost, take time and, and of people who were employed by the authority, or volunteers to take calls, inquiring about things on unpaid care, unpaid carers, and if they're inquiring and things, you know, I find, I find that quite disturbing, really. That, if there is one or two, even, even that small number of people out there who, who want to communicate, I think we should allow that. I mean, people do slip through the net, and if we can stop people from slipping through the net by sending letters out, personally, I don't have an issue with that. And if staff, and Penny said it, not me, if staff are opposed to that, who, who personally, it's, it's, it's the right of staff to contact with, have that contact with anybody out there who's got issues, reference to caring and unpaid carers especially, I don't have a problem with that. They can phone me here if they want, yeah, I mean, I don't have an issue with that either. You know, I mean, I, I'd help them out the best I can, I think every member would. So for, for staff to even say that, it's, we're communicating as best we can, sending letters out or having even that much contact we can, for me, I got no issue with that. And we just set a budget of how much, in millions, and how much Penny, the budget and social services and all that side has as well, to send some letters out, to make that contact with one or two young carers out there, for me, I ain't got an issue with that. So I will not support the amendment, no way will I support the amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Linda Guppy.
Hi, I can support this amendment. One, because Penny talked about young carers. To get a carer's allowance, you need to be 16 plus, and other young parents. And two, I think we need to increase the communication. Lots of people do not know where to start in applying for any allowance. And I think, actually, we should keep B and add on, put it, a letter in our council tax letters, not get rid of, not get rid of it. Communication more, not less.
Okay, Counselor Moyn Paul.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I must have heard differently, because I thought that Penny was saying that there was a whole group of them that were giving out all this information. So information was coming from all the different groups going out to the young carers and the older carers and the adult carers, all the carers. So there was an adequate, and they were all sending out the same message. So if you had B in there as well, I can see that it could confuse matters. I think probably Simon hadn't realised that she meant there was a lot of different people. It's like having a lot of different groups together, all sending out the correct message in different ways to different groups, so that they were all going to get covered. Am I right, Penny?
You certainly are. I don't know if I'm allowed to reply, Chair, am I?
Not at the moment, thank you.
No, no, okay.
I shouldn't have put her in that position, but I, I do support.
For the amendment. Can I just point out to Counselor Simon Harris and Linda Guppy that you would have to bring forward a further amendment if you wanted to go, to include that as an amendment to this motion, or it could be something you could, you could take out of the meeting and make that suggestion in one of our select committees. Counselor Harris is next.
Thank you, Chair. I don't understand why somebody receiving the same information 10 times, if it's the same information, should confuse anybody, to be perfectly honest.
Harris then for a moment, right. I don't have any of that raised hands, so we will, oh, Counselor Louise Brown, then we'll go to the vote on this.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I think the point that's being made here is, is that it's not the council as an agency who actually administers these particular allowances. I mean, I've just looked it up online, and it's a Department of Work and Pensions responsibility. And I think the danger is, is that if the council puts out a communication, as they have done with regard to the business grants that in relation to COVID, I mean, people then apply to the council, but it's, it's not only a question of the fact that there's other agencies that deal with this, it's also about who is responsible for it. And I think, you know, adding that, I think, obviously, communication is important, but I mean, if you were going to, in relation to, for example, an NHS service, you would expect the NHS to be issuing information and communication on it. So I think possibly it's a question more of perhaps asking the Department of Work and Pensions to increase their publications, or the agencies involved, rather than that the council as such, because I think the danger is, is that if, if we issue communications on it, I mean, we did do on the business grants, because that's where, we're on COVID, because that's where people actually apply. And I think, I think that was the main point that was being made. It wasn't to say that we don't support it. I think, I think I was just trying to clarify that point. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to the vote now on this amendment.
Chair, do I get a right of reply on?
No, sorry, sorry, not an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Right, that's clearly carried, members. So that now becomes a substantive motion. So that will come back now to you for a further vote. So we will have the opportunity to, we'll have a raised hand facility to see if anybody wants to add anything to it before we go to the, to vote on it as a substantive motion. And before we do that, obviously, Counselor Watkins will have a right of reply as the proposer of the original motion.
Chair, I can't find a hand, I'd like a bit of information. Where are we on this motion exactly now? We have members within, members without. Could we have the actual bit of the bottom end of the motion read out so we know where we are?
Yeah. What we're doing, have you got the motion in front of you? It's simply a matter of taking out B.
Right, we're taking out B, are we?
Yeah, taking out B and adding, ask the Chancellor to remove the £128 threshold, which is in the chat bar.
Right, okay.
In fact, the other, the removal of B is also in the chat bar. I know sometimes it's difficult to find it.
Okay. Right on.
Have you actually voted now, or do you wish to vote that?
I voted on the Penny bit, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this now becomes a substantive motion. Raise your hand to speak before I ask Counselor Jo Watkins, if she'd like a right of reply to sum up. Counselor Jones.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. I perhaps put it wrongly, because, I mean, Simon seemed to really have got the wrong ends of stick. I really, really must emphasise that the group who run the strategy group for, and all the volunteer and statutory organisations who look after the carers work incredibly hard. Nobody's refused to do anything. What they did worry about was a confusion, a lack of ownership, and the fact that they have already received all this information. Every carer within our remit who we would write to has got all this information, and they carried through and they helped to, to, you know, get, get it, and other grants such as the small grant scheme, which I've explained. There are many financial bits and pieces that can be added. As Counselor Armand Watts said, it is a complicated procedure. You can't just go in and ask for a carers allowance. You know, there are thresholds and things that have to be attained. So I just want to emphasise that the group are incredibly hardworking, they look after carers all the time, and of course, they would answer the phone and do everything else. I mean, that's a ridiculous thing to say that they wouldn't. However, you know, the responsibility, Counselor Brown was right, it's really not ours to do that, and we could do it, but it's, it's already been done. You know, the carers that have slipped between the net are not the ones that we would be writing to, are they? Because we haven't got them on our radar. But the whole point of the training of the doctor's surgery, of using all the organisations together, including the NHS, is that these carers will find their way to the strategy, to the group, and they will be looked after in every way, socially as well, you know, their wellbeing, every aspect of their being, looking after them. So, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Counselor Harris.
Yeah, Chair, I just want to raise the point of is, is, it was Counselor Jones, the Cabinet Member, who said that they didn't have time to, they wouldn't have time to answer the phone. You know, I mean, it was just, I was picking her on that point, that actually, you pick the phone up when it rings, you know what I mean, and, and she made the point. And it just goes back to everything which we've been talking about, really, is it's about young carers, it is, who slip through the net. Thank you, Chair.
Right, with Counselor Watkins, would you like, oh, Counselor Brown.
Yeah, sorry, I think I'd just like to raise-
No, this, so-
Sorry, Madam Chairman, can I speak now, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to raise a point. I mean, at one stage, I did have the privilege of working in a law centre, and we had a specialised advisor who advised on benefits because of the fact that benefits interact. And, you know, if you get one benefit, it may interact with another and you lose another benefit. And I think to just send out something on carers allowance and not attendance allowance or any of the other benefits could actually be the wrong advice to give, because you may end up losing other benefits if you're not careful. So this sort of thing really has to be dealt with by the people who are more specialised and can help in this particular area, because otherwise, instead of benefiting people, you can end up, they could end up in a worse position because of the interaction between different benefits. And I don't think people realise how, how complicated benefits can be in terms of how they interact. And so I think we'd be doing a disservice to our residents if we started just mentioning one benefit when there's plenty of other benefits that are available or, or could end up, they could end up in a, in a worse position if you're not careful, if they don't get the advice from the people who are there to help them in terms of what they should or shouldn't be applying for. So I don't think people realise quite how complicated benefits are and how they interact, you know, both with earnings and with other benefits. So I think you've got to be very, very careful about just singling out one benefit. And, you know, as I say, I think it's a matter more for the Department of Work and Pensions. And, you know, I'm certainly supportive of- And, you know, I'm certainly supportive of carers and the work that they do, but I don't want to add to somebody to end up, you know, ringing ringing up the council who don't specialise, council general number who don't specialise in benefits inquiries, and then not necessarily getting the specialised advice that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Watkins?
Thank you very much.
Would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, thank you very much to everybody who's spoken in favour of this motion today, and thank you particularly Armand for that really useful amendment. That was a really good one. Thanks ever so much. And just to emphasise that I have had a conversation already with Penny. So we've already discussed the groups in particular who I felt weren't necessarily getting the information through, and I think we'll probably do some extra work behind the scenes to try and reach those particular individuals and groups of people who I think aren't necessarily hearing all these messages as quite as well as it could happen. But thank you very much for everyone's words of support, and I look forward to the vote.
Thank you. That's clearly, that's clearly carried. Thank you very much indeed. So we move on to the next motion from councillor Francis Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I've put this motion in the main chair, because you'll recall that in May 2019, some two years ago, actually councillor Joe Watkins put forward a motion, and our council declared a climate emergency. And this was with unanimous support from across the council. We kind of have since developed a climate change plan, and the impacts of climate change locally here potentially include more extreme weather events, species loss, and increased flood risk. And I think this year, very tragically, much of the county has seen significant flood risk flood events, not least here in Mego with Endy, where I live and where I represent. The council's plan, which is clearly on the public website for everyone to see, describes the action the council will take. It talks about things like better habitat management, increased biodiversity of green space, which all makes sense, of course, because, in effect, vegetation and open space sequesters carbon and mitigates against climate change. In the plan, we also plan, as a council and a group, to plant 10,000 new trees by next year, by 2022. We're going to maintain and enhance biodiverse spaces and make ecosystems more resilient to increase areas of woodland management, woodland management, and we're going to retain existing woodland. Sorry, Chair, my cable, my computer, it would be a terrible shame for it to go off. Stay with me, Chair, sorry about that. Got that many cables around my feet.
I've never seen it.
Apologies for that. And we're going to retain existing woodland. So you can imagine my surprise and disappointment, and I'll use those terms without, you know, wishing to overread the custard, when I learnt, not through direct officer consultation, I might add, but through other means, that the estates department had been negotiating with a private developer on a tract of land, which is well used, but actually wild open space, and comprises a significant amount of woodland. So this this space is public open space, it's categorised and allocated as amenity land in the local development plan. And, you know, my understanding is that the expectation is that amenity space, open space, public open space, is safeguarded, and it should be safeguarded, for the benefit of our communities, both now and into the future. This particular piece of land, which the estates department have been negotiating over, is classified as open space amenity land, and that's already in very short supply here in Mego with Endy. In fact, in 2008, the council commissioned an open space study by Ashley Godfrey. And in 2008, and we've had a whole lot of developments since 2008, I'm sure you'll concur, that there was a significant deficit in amenity land here in Mego with Endy. The whole space I'm talking about here is about three acres, and is biodiverse rich with expansive and, I believe, diverse ecology. There is certainly evidence of owls, bats, storm ice, and potentially badgers. The loss of even a section of this land could have an impact on the wider biodiversity of the area. I can only assume, Chair, that the estates department has not read the climate change plan. I'm advised that the estates team have no need to go through any public appropriation process before entering into such negotiations. And I'm also advised that it is not the role of the estates department to determine the value of any land in amenity or biodiversity terms. This suggests to me, Chair, that there is nothing to stop the council, should it have an approach from a developer, for example, from entering into negotiations without any public consultation process on the appropriation for any part of amenity land in the county. Now, you know, we heard, we heard earlier, I think councillor Easton, talk about Coltcock Country Park, for example. In short, I've put my motion, Chair, and it is very much about the safeguarding of amenity land across the county, as my experience suggests that actions across the council do not match up with our stated rhetoric around, for example, climate change and future generations. And I personally believe that we do have a duty to safeguard amenity land for the benefit of current and future generations. I'm sure that members would agree that never have our open spaces, our amenity spaces been more important, as they have been during the pandemic, for the use of our communities. Never have we faced more challenges in terms of mental health and wellbeing than during this pandemic. And never have we faced more challenges in terms of climate change. So, Chair, that is why I've put the motion and would request member support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I noticed in the chat bar that councillor Simon Howarth has seconded the motion. Right, the raised hands. Councillor Phil Murphy's indicated he wishes to speak. Councillor Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And, you know, I'd like to respond to this. This council is fully committed to ensuring that it takes decisions in accordance with the principles of the wellbeing of Future Generations Act, and we undertake actions that seek to make a positive contribution to our decarbonisation agenda. The proposed motion, however, fails to take account of the safeguards that we already have in place and could lead to unintended consequences that will serve to undermine the actions that the motions is seeking to prevent. Motion is silent on the definition of safeguarding. However, if we assume that the motivation is specifically designed to prohibit any works on amenity land and retain sites in their existing states, this would prevent community groups or local sports clubs from the erection of any clubhouses, fencing, etc., prevent the installation of renewable technologies, tree planting, or indeed from adjoining occupiers having the ability to undertake drainage works to remedy existing issues. There will also be occasions where there may be a need to create access points through such land in order to facilitate development on adjoining land, which could result in additional homes being made available or the creation of new jobs. In each of these examples, the local planning authority will need to provide formal consent for the proposed works. This will give local communities, members and other stakeholders the opportunity to make their views known, and it will be for the planning authority to ultimately determine whether the proposals are appropriate, in essence acting as custodians of this land. If the land is council owned, there will be another layer of decision making, as if the proposal involves a possible sale or lease to a third party, there is already a procedure in place which does not, which does involve consultation with local members. It's very important that we do not make a decision based on a sweeping generalisation that actually prevents communities maximising the use of this land, or indeed fails to enable the application of potential future decarbonisation solutions that we have yet to dream of. However, there is an acceptance that when the asset management strategy is next updated, or possibly ahead of it, that we ensure that the disposal policy and the wider strategic strategy and plan has more explicit regards towards the climate emergency and decarbonisation, as well as the local government and elections bill. So I can't support this motion. I understand why it's been brought, but it's because it's going to create far too many difficulties, as I've set out. So I'll end with that, Chair. I can't support it, however well meant.
Okay. Councillor Giles Howard, next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Francis, we've recognised that we're often of a similar mind regarding things like the M4 relief road and the LDP preferred strategy, but the reference to public amenity space doesn't have enough clarity in the sense of the motion, and Phil's touched on that already. I mean, it could mean that land owned by the council or any public body, it could be private land across which are public rights of passage, it could be land that has or has not been developed or allocated for development, or it could refer to land in the open countryside, or including that within settlement boundaries. And so the nature of safeguarding is also not clarified in the motion, but I think we've got to recognise that sometimes development can bring about betterment in water management and ways of improving biodiversity. So on this occasion, we're not of a similar mind. There hasn't been any wider assessment of the consequences of such a motion on the business of the council or any other parties, or against future generations and equality legislation, and the latter being something that Francis has always been very keen to see applied elsewhere. So I'm afraid that I find the wording of the motion extremely vague, and decisions made on a vague premise usually lead to unintended circumstances. So I'm sorry, Chair, although I appreciate where Francis is coming from, I just can't support the motion.
Councillor Joe Watkins?
Thank you very much, Chair. Francis, I likewise have great concerns about how certain bits of land are treated within the council's boundaries. There's a section of land in my ward as well, which keeps on coming up and up and up, and I have no idea why it keeps on coming up, because it's a lovely stretch of open ground, it's very well used by the community. So I completely sympathise with your reasons for bringing forward the motion, and I would really like us to actually be able to do something about this that's actually constructive. I don't think I have the brainpower today to put forward an amendment to try and make sure that we can actually get something through this council at the moment, and Phil and Giles have both put forward concerns about the actual language. But I do hope that if this motion doesn't pass, then we would actually be able to find some way to actually work to safeguard our amenity space and to stop them from being able to be sold out and developed upon. Thank you.
Councillor Lisa Dimmock?
Put my camera on. Went off on a tangent then. Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Taylor for confirming the motive behind the motion. I think we all understand the need to want to protect amenity land from development, and in relation to the land you have mentioned that falls within my ward, I will do my utmost to act in the best interests of my electorate. However, as my colleague stated, this motion could have the opposite intended impact for communities and prevent infrastructure groups would like to see or new opportunities. I believe if this motion was upheld, it potentially jeopardised the project on Ben Croft Lane for the rugby and cricket club, after they have been without a home for so long, and they are now so close to securing, and that's why I can't support the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Martin Grokka?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to support Francis's motion, and I speak as the Labour representative on the Climate Emergency Working Group. Group spaces in our community are at a premium, and the point has been made that we need to develop them, not not put them under threat. I'm afraid I found Phil Murphy's justification for opposing the motion was little more than gobbledegook, and from the speakers that have spoken so far, it looks to me as if this is, this is breaking down on party lines, which would be a tragedy. I think that with no motion that this county council passes, can we guarantee into the future what it will and it won't allow to happen? We're not crystal ball gazing, we are actually taking steps to protect our open space, to stop it being gobbled up in the way it has been in recent years. If we need to step in to protect amenity land, let us do that, and not go into these far-flung possibilities of what might happen. What might happen is that the climate will get even worse, and that our futures and our children's and grandchildren's futures might be very severely damaged as a result. I think this council should do everything it can at every moment it can to protect and support the environment, and I congratulate Francis on bringing this motion.
Councillor Jane Pratt?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and I really do take objection to councillor Taylor's criticism of our commitment to our climate change emergency, which she made in her statement. The Welsh Government, in fact, see Mammothshire as an exemplary authority, so much so that they are working with us on special projects, and we are the only authority they are working with in many cases. We have a senior officer responsible for decarbonisation and cross-party groups that have attracted attracted Welsh Government funding and are forwarding our agenda. But I cannot, however, support this general motion, which, quite frankly, lacks clarity and detail. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor of Greenland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we would all support the notion that amenity land is vitally important to us, absolutely right. But to take any piece of land that we own and to sterilise its use into the future is not going to bring about what we actually want. And the way to bring about our increase in amenity land is through the LDP process, and we will later on be considering exactly that. What areas of additional land do we want to bring into use as amenity land to support our desires for the people of this county, and in fact, the the carbon issue as well? That's the place for us to decide on not just bringing in any piece of land, but increasing the amount of land that we want to, but to sterilise one piece of land in perpetuity for future generations is not the way to do it, and for that reason, I can't support this motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, would you like to sum up now, and we'll go to the vote?
Certainly, Chair. So just to, you know, remind members that my motion was that in fulfilling its role to support sustainable communities, this council saves all public amenity space in the interest of future generations. So, you know, to be fair, I think there are a fair few, I never expected this motion to pass, but there are a fair few obtuse responses there. With all due respect to councillor Greenland's points, this council has not allocated any additional amenity spaces through the LDP process in Mego with Endy, despite the 2008 Open Space Survey. And therefore, it would be wonderful to see additional spaces allocated, but it would also be wonderful to see, because this space is allocated in the LDP as public open amenity space, the space I mentioned to you. In terms of things being designated as public open amenity space, councillor Greenland, I'll also advise that Rockville Farm Development also removed a very large tract of open amenity space from this community. So at the present time, all we've seen through these safeguards that exist already is the loss of amenity space. Councillor Dimmock referenced the potential for developing the sports pitches, which are, again, identified in that public open. which are again identified in that public open space study of us having a shortage. I've been working with the rugby club and the cricket club for the past nearly five years to put forward some land. The land that is currently being looked at is not designated currently as public open amenity space. And I think from my motion, it's quite clear that I am not suggesting that we prevent community organisations looking after public open amenity space. I'll take the point that, you know, I could have been clearer, I could have worded it differently. But in general, I think my disappointment lies in the fact that this council talks about planting 10,000 new trees, yet it's perfectly content to enter into negotiations with a developer on a piece of land which forms part of a larger wooded area. And that seems to make no sense to me. Maybe it makes sense to members of the public, Chair. Oh, sorry, members of the council, but I don't think it makes sense to members of the public interested in resilience and climate emergency. So obviously, Chair, you'll move to the vote, but I think that councillor Watkins, you know, I'm a fairly practical person. I'm more than happy to work with other councillors, including councillor Greenland and councillor Murphy, to come up with something that might be agreeable so that we can safeguard this very important, important amenity space for our communities into the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Wait for the vote app to come up. Okay, councillor Blakeborough, I've just noticed your message. I'm going to get down to the results. We acknowledge your vote, councillor Blakeborough, but the motion has been defeated. We got 32 against. So we move on to the next motion, which is councillor Richard John.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to bring this forward. These last 12 months have been an extraordinary time for the communities that we represent, where the challenges they have faced have been on a scale that we haven't seen in this country since the Second World War. But our response to this adversity has been more resilient, thanks to the outstanding contribution of our public servants in Monmouthshire, our carers, teachers, many of those employed by this council who have worked so hard to keep essential services running. The past year has been a really painful and lonely one for many of our residents, detached from their families, friends and loved ones. And many have been banned from taking part in many of the activities they love. In fact, we've all made extraordinary sacrifices and put up with considerable restrictions to our personal freedoms and human rights, and for good reason, to protect older and vulnerable people. But the consequences of the lockdown economically, socially, psychologically have been devastating. And of course, its impact has been disproportionately felt, particularly for women, for poorer communities, and especially for children and young people. Domestic violence has been on the rise, and the risks facing people in abusive homes or relationships are deeply concerning. I think it's imperative that we move as quickly as it is safe to to end these restrictions. Now, in December, the Welsh Government published its coronavirus control plan. That's its own tier system to set out the criteria which would determine four different levels of restrictions. But often, it's felt like Welsh Government have been making the rules up as they go along, rather than strictly following their own criteria. Now, back in mid-December, Wales was ablaze with Covid-19. The average seven-day case rate per 100,000 was more than double the rate of any other UK nation at 556. That's nearly double the 300 threshold for a Level 4 lockdown. Yet we were in Level 3 at the time. Now, some local authorities had average rates over 1,000. Despite this, on the 14th of December, Welsh Government said it was unlikely that they would introduce further restrictions until after what was then a planned five-day easing of restrictions over Christmas. Although, as we'll all recall, this was swiftly followed a few days later by the introduction of that Level 4 lockdown on the 20th of December. Since then, and thanks to the actions of the public, rates have fallen significantly, well below the Welsh Government's criteria for a lockdown. Indeed, most authorities in Wales now meet all the criteria for Level 1 or 2. Now, the latest data which is available for the 7th of March, the average case rate in Wales was 41 per 100,000, and here in Monmouthshire, it was 21. Last week, there were 53 Covid admissions into hospital in Wales. That's lower than the level of hospital admissions back in July and August, when restrictions were quite minimal. The R rate is currently estimated to be 0.7, and test positivity is below the 10% threshold for Alert Level 4. It's currently at 4.2 in Wales, and locally here in Monmouthshire, it's at 2.2. Welsh Government is no longer following its own evidence. And I think we've surpassed a tipping point whereby the risks of continued lockdown outweigh the risks of not doing so. As Covid cases have fallen, our world-beating vaccination programme continues at pace. The UK's vaccine supply has been an incredible success, and the evidence is that vaccines are offering up to 94% protection against coronavirus within four weeks of a single dose. And in four weeks' time, in the middle of April, we look forward to reaching that point where 99% of people at risk of dying from Covid-19 will have received at least their first dose of the vaccine. In England, in light of the falling case rates and the remarkable speed of the vaccination programme, the Prime Minister has set out a roadmap. It's cautious and it's gradual, but it's a detailed plan to lead the country out of lockdown and back to normality. Unfortunately, here in Wales, there's no light at the end of the tunnel. Welsh Government are still refusing to publish a plan to lead the country out of these restrictions. I think businesses need to be able to plan for when they can reopen before our high streets turn into ghost towns. All our children and young people need to be able to return to full-time education and mix with their friends outside of school. And given the links between vulnerability to the virus and obesity, I think Welsh Government should be set in a priority to allow organised outdoor physical activity and allow people to travel to take part in outdoor exercise. And we also want to see our leisure centres being allowed to reopen in the near future. There's speculation in recent days that Welsh Government is considering the return of a stay-local restriction, possibly within five miles. That was what we had last year. Now, this is probably great for people who live in Panathos or Poncana, and they can travel from one side of Cardiff to another. But for many of our residents, they can't access basic services within five miles. There's been further speculation that perhaps hairdressers might be able to open imminently. But we're not hearing the same about non-essential retail, and I'm not quite sure how that makes sense. Welsh Government has speculated that tourism accommodation might be able to open for Easter. But at the same time, I don't see how that is compatible with a stay-local instruction. I don't know where Mark Drakeford likes to go on holiday, but you'd think a lot of people would like to go on holiday somewhere a bit further than five miles from where they live. Speculation and confusion is rife because of the vacuum. So instead of this endless speculation, surely it would be better for Welsh Government to set out a clear plan, a roadmap to normality. And I really worry that we're in danger of Welsh Government's restrictions becoming so disproportionate and detached from their own evidence that we risk the public not respecting their rules. So in light of the falling rates on the Covid vaccination programme, any continuation of the current restrictions feels disproportionate. In conclusion, it's been a long, dark winter. This motion is calling on the Welsh Government to offer the people of Monmouthshire some hope, to enable our businesses, our families and citizens to plan for the future, to let our children and young people and their families get back to enjoying life. So I look forward to hearing the views of some members now, and I hope that members will consider supporting the motion. Thank you very much.
Do we have a second of your motion?
Yes, our second, Chairman.
That's councillor Bob Greenland. Thank you, councillor Greenland. Right. Right. Councillor Roger Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment, please, starting with B. And the wording is welcome to the success and speed of the vaccination programme across the UK, particularly in Wales. And C congratulates the Welsh Government for publishing a detailed roadmap to ending Covid-19 restrictions in Wales. We are dealing with a deadly dangerous virus here. We can't afford to play around and get it wrong. The UK government has set out a guideline that will not be changed, so I gather. So if anything happens on the...
Have a second of your amendment. Can I just interrupt a moment? Do you have a second, then? For your amendments?
Yes, Chair. I, councillor Petroni, second the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, I'll stop there, but as I say, we're dealing with a dangerous virus. Shouldn't be played around with, shouldn't be politicised.
Right. Would you like to clarify what your amendments are? I got the first one. At the end of B, you want particularly in Wales added?
Particularly in Wales, yes. It's been ultra-successful. Somebody's had both the vaccine already. It's obviously working well. And C, just change it to congratulates the Welsh Government for publishing a detailed roadmap to ending Covid-19 restrictions in Wales, which is going to happen. You don't need to add that which is going to happen, but...
Because they have done. Okay, so I was just trying to clarify. See, you want to congratulate... I just want to make sure I've got it right so that we can... Let members know, congratulate the Welsh Government on publishing. Is that what you're saying, councillor Harris?
Yeah, a detailed roadmap to ending Covid-19 restrictions in Wales.
So that now becomes the amendment that we are going to debate. So we'll wait for the new raised hand facility.
And point of order, can we have an amendment?
A point of order, Chair. Point of order at the time, please.
Yes, could councillor John go through your South and your petition first, please, Chair?
Councillor Easton, I was listening to councillor John. I'll come to you in a minute.
Chair, you were not giving him permission to speak. He went straight into the discussion without your permission.
He asked for a point of order.
And you didn't say yes.
Councillor Easton, he asked for a point of order, and I was listening to what that point of order is. Councillor John.
Chair, I was just wondering whether it's permissible to have an amendment congratulating the Welsh Government for something that hasn't happened.
Well, that's what we will debate.
Chair, that's the subject.
We will take the amendment as stated by councillor Harris and seconded by councillor Petroni. Right, councillor Easton.
Yes, thank you, Chair. When I, as a member, call a point of order, I have your permission before I speak. Today, several members have called for a point of order and gone straight into their dialogue. I think it's inappropriate. When I ask for a point of order, you say yes, you can speak. Others are doing it without asking your permission.
Councillor Easton, points of order are quite challenging under these circumstances, as I'm sure we all appreciate.
And they should treat you with respect.
Thank you, councillor Easton. We will note that, and I've asked members to take that into consideration. But I do appreciate when points of order are raised. It's very difficult sometimes to establish what the point of order is and where to sort of interrupt people. I don't like interrupting people unnecessarily, but we'll take that on board. Thank you. Right, so we've got the... We're waiting for the raised hand facility now for the amendment. Oh, we've got it. Right, okay, we've got it. Councillor Sarah Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and just speak briefly to the amendments, if I may. Just to say that unfortunately I won't support the amendment, and I certainly have no interest in politicising this debate. It's too important to do that, and I genuinely want the best for our communities. And I want to make sure we get this right. But the reason I can't support the amendment is that I can't congratulate the Welsh Government on a roadmap, a detailed roadmap, which is so far from the truth right now. Because the roadmap that we were published, or we had sight of that was published back earlier in the year, is just not applicable anymore. That roadmap talks about all schools being open. It talks about a level indicator plan. If we were to apply the indicators within that plan, we would all be in Level 1 right now, not Level 4, with everything shut down. So I'm very sorry, I can't support the amendments, and I look forward to voting and hopefully speaking on the proposed motion.
Right, the chat bar seems to be causing some confusion. It certainly is for me. It seems to have gone into funny mode. I did notice before it went off that councillor Petroni indicated he wished to speak now. As a second of the motion, I would invite you to speak now.
Chairman, yes. Is that okay, Chair, or...
Sorry, I was correcting it to amended motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I support councillor Harris's amendment for two reasons. One is councillor John has deliberately avoided mentioning Wales, given Wales certainly at the early first dose was the first country to hit milestones around sort of the country being vaccinated and so forth. And now it is by some country distance, the leading UK nation for the second dose. It currently stands at 6.5%, which, England, to give you a comparator, is 1.5%. So in the second dose terms and the initial first dose terms, Wales was really above punching its weight. And councillor John has deliberately avoided that because he knows Conservative-controlled England has manifestly failed on so many areas. It's worth noting the success of the Welsh Government on the first dose speed, but particularly on the second dose, because as we all know, the second dose is the key that gives so many people so much reassurance. And so it's worth acknowledging the particularly Wales bit. On the second roadmap point, which I think councillor John's main point and councillor Sarah Jones's concern, is there is a roadmap, as councillor Sarah Jones has acknowledged. It was actually produced in mid-February. I don't know what time period councillor Jones was referring to. But I think she was referring to the tiers, and she can correct me if I'm wrong. But there was a roadmap published in mid-February, and it wasn't to the detail as England. But that was deliberate, because it is a virus that changes and turns very, very quickly, and the variants can suddenly spring up. And there's a great fear that if you open up too early and you allow the virus to spread and mutate, that it mutates in a way that is resistant to the vaccine. So it was not as detailed as England, but deliberately so to be ready to move and twist as the virus moves and twists. And this is a really important point, Chair, because the difference-stance tick in England was to set out these concrete, firm positions throughout the Covid pandemic, not just now, but throughout. And each time the UK government has done that, it's had to U-turn. I mean, literally every single time. And the reason why it's had to do that is because the virus changed. It changes, it mutates how it spreads, the speed of its spread. And so therefore, you have to be careful about when you announce and how you lay out those things. Because I tell you exactly what will happen. If you announce something three weeks or four weeks or two months ahead, and something happens, the virus mutates in any given way, then you have to U-turn or you have to change. And then councillor John would be the first... Oh, it's a point of order, Chair.
Councillor Gaffey, what is your point of order? Thank you, councillor Petroni.
Sorry, I can't sit and listen to Dimitri saying about mutations of the Covid...
Councillor Gaffey, I'm sorry, that is not a point of order.
No, no, can I just say?
I'll invite him to speak after he's finished.
Can I just say? Can I just say, it's really...
Can I just finish? If a rule has been broken or preceded council procedure policy, we can't accept just points of order about what people are saying, but you will have an opportunity...
Can I just say, what he said was quite dangerous about what the vaccine...
No, Councillor Gaffey, you can speak, invite you in to speak later. I'm going to have to stop you there because it is not a point of order and we can't interrupt each other because we don't agree...
He said something quite serious about what...
He's busy when he speaks shortly. I will invite you in to speak. Councillor Petroni.
Look forward to being told what I was saying was quite dangerous, Chair. Back to the point, you have to be fleet of foot as a government regardless of your political colouring because the virus changes and mutates. That was the point I was trying to make. I hope that's not too dangerous. And so that is why you don't have as detailed as England for fear of that. But there is a roadmap contrary to councillor John's motion and it does give clear indications of when decisions will be made and what sectors will be allowed to, what sectors will be considered at that time. But that is why it's not as detailed as England to be fleet of foot. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor William Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say that I think I'm getting old and I think I'm getting very old because I'm sure that I heard councillor John refer to us having a good record in Wales. And when Dimitri says that he hasn't heard him say anything about Wales, that he's not talking about Wales, I begin to think, what, I'm going mad or not? Councillor John did mention how well we done in Wales and I support the motion because it's very difficult if you can't look ahead and know what you're going to do. I myself have been shielded for months and months now and I know that I would be able to hopefully be free to go out places in March 31st. So I think having some sort of a plan, I know it can be altered by unforeseen circumstances, but to help people start their businesses and to get themselves ready, I think we have to have some sort of plan and I support the motion.
Councillor Gaffey, would you like to speak now?
Yes, what I need to put councillor Petroni correct on is that he made reference that the variations of the Covid virus and the unsuitability of the Covid vaccines at moment that could not be protected by it, which is really, really long and wrong. There are enough people out there afraid of receiving the vaccination at the moment and I think he... I'm sure he didn't mean to say that, but what he said and he implied is that variations are not covered by the vaccine, which is incorrect.
Chair, that's not what I said, but for clarification, this is a personal clarification. It is medical and sending the news, I don't know if Linda Gaffey had read it, that the mutations definitely make vaccines less effective. And there was a fear, I said the fear, I don't know if Linda Gaffey heard that, is a fear that it will develop a mutation that would negate the vaccines. It was a fear, not that it happened.
Councillor Richard John.
Thank you. I did try to word the motion in a way that wasn't overtly party political. I haven't praised the glorious Conservative government and criticised how it's gone in Wales, so I'd be quite content to accept the first part of councillor Harris's amendment to add particularly in Wales. Obviously, we are in Wales and have a particular interest in how the vaccination programme is going, but I can't accept the second part of his motion, I'm afraid, because I can't congratulate the Welsh Government for something that hasn't happened. They published a coronavirus control plan on the 20th of December, they've updated it, but they're not using those yardsticks, the evidence, the criteria that they've set out, so I can't support his amendment, I'm afraid.
Councillor Grokot, I understand you wish to speak next, though you haven't got any time.
Like councillor Petroni, I certainly didn't pick up from his comments what I think councillor Gaffey interpreted. I agree fully with what Dimitri said. You may remember a few days ago, a panic in the media over someone that had come in from, was it Brazil, who they couldn't manage to find through trace arrangements because he might be far more dangerous out there than people with other forms of the disease. So I would support Dimitri very strongly in what he said and also support him in terms of what he was saying about the Welsh Government putting forward, if you like, a more cautious way out of the difficulties we find ourselves in. I think that if I lived in England, I've already said earlier this afternoon, I would be very concerned about the proposals being put forward by the English Government at the moment. And I remember my Christmas being absolutely ruined by the English Prime Minister because he was saying that we were all going to have a Christmas with our families and I was looking forward to seeing two of my grandchildren and at the very last minute, I wasn't able to do that. I think the attitude of the Welsh Government is far more sanguine, far more realistic. And I think you've only got to look at opinion polls, the Welsh people are supporting Mark Drakeford far more than the English are supporting Boris Johnson. I think that the amendment that councillor Harris has brought acknowledges that Wales is at the forefront in bringing out the vaccine. We can be really proud of our health service in Wales. I am very, very anxious about the English rush to normality as they see it, once bitten, twice shy. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Councillor Armond Watson, councillor Lisa Dimmock, and then I'm going to go to the vote on this.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can you see me, it's kind of, I'm under a cloud now, so it's got really dark here, the weather's changed again. Chair, I'm happy to support Roger's motion. I mean, it's kind of sad in a way, really, isn't it? Any members of the public can see that the thing is divided in party political lines and it kind of saddens me really that we are in a position where this thing is, albeit, you know, under the veil of, oh, but we all really care for, you know, progress and we want to get the people back to business and all that. It's a subtle dig and a way to undermine the excellent work the Welsh Government's done. Of course, there's been mistakes and of course, you know, at UK level, there have been noticeable mistakes about the time it took to close down our airports to let kind of people come in to this country, that there are endless amount of things that we can, you know, in months to come, go back in hindsight to then say there were mistakes made. But I would urge caution about this rush back to normality. My partner's sister lives in northern Italy, they've just gone in on last Thursday, we had a phone call to say they've gone back into their third lockdown. And I remember we talked back in September about the possibility, I mentioned it, the chief executive talked about it, about the next lockdown, which of course we've just come out of, we're just about to come out of. So we should be cautious about also managing expectations and I think that's really what Welsh Government's trying to do here. You know, they're not trying to kid anybody, they've been quite honest, to the personal detriment really to some of the leadership, I think, that Mark Drake has delivered. Now, everyone, the Tories will be rolling their eyes and saying, well, you would say that anyway, but I genuinely do think that. So anyway, that's my piece, I'm happy to support Roger. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Lisa Dimmock.
Thank you, Chair. Like Rich, I supported the first part of what councillor Harris said. As someone who had a vaccine weeks ago, you know, congratulations to Welsh Government, but we desperately require a detailed roadmap. People need hope. If any of you have spoken to your neighbours, your residents, people are losing hope, young people have been suffering, as well as their parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the vote now in the chat bar, please, Nicola? This is, just to make it clear, this is on councillor Harris's amendment. Twenty-three, twenty-four again, so that's lost. Yeah, that's lost, so we'll go back to the original motion now. Right, if I can get my chat bar to move back up. I think we've had lots of conversation around this motion now, so... Councillor Harris's amendment. Right, so we had the motion submitted by councillor Richard John. Now, several people have indicated they wish to speak, but they have actually spoken on the amendment. So I'll go through the list and if you're quite happy to move on, we can possibly go to the vote on this. Councillor Petroni?
Was I first on this? I thought it was councillor Sarah Jones.
No, sorry, I'm going back to the original...
Oh, my apologies, Chair, my apologies, sorry, there's so many bars, you just have to lose track. To the original motion, no. Because I know it's a long, very, very long meeting, is at every point councillor John has been wrong on what Welsh Government should do at a point during this pandemic. At the 1st of December, councillor John was, and councillor Fox, were lamenting the Welsh Government on its new restrictions around hospitality. That was the 1st of December. After that, Covid infection rates spiked uncontrollably. They were also against the fire break, which eased the Covid in rate infections. So councillor John has a track record of being wrong every single time on this big issue, so I urge all councillors to bear that in mind.
Okay. Councillor Pratt, you are next. As I say, I'm hoping we won't take too long to go through this list, we've had a long discussion on this, but I appreciate some members having had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And I fully support this motion from councillor John and although the Labour Party may not want to accept it, the vaccination programme that has been led by our Prime Minister Boris Johnson is an outstanding success throughout Europe. We have done absolutely brilliantly on it and all the public people, all the people I speak to really appreciate it. But I think there is a lot of confusion in Wales and I think our country does lack direction and I talk to businesspeople and residents that are trying to plan for this year, they're trying to, you know, a lot of them are employed in the leisure and the tourist industries, shops and hotels, restaurants, campsites, they don't know what stock to order, they don't know when they're going to be able to open up and they don't know when they can take bookings. So it's a really worrying time for these businesses and for residents. And a lot of the people employed in leisure and tourist industries are young people who are really suffered disproportionately through this pandemic. So it really does seem to me that Welsh Government are not showing the direction and strategy that people want to see, there's not the leadership from them and I think it shows they have little regard for the post-Covid economic recovery of Wales. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Greenland, Bob Greenland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the cabinet member with a portfolio for business, I want to also support this motion because of the lack of the roadmap that is so desperately needed by businesses. And I'm just going to quote from a business owner in Abegavenny, speaking on behalf of traders, and this is Wales Online, and she said this. "We're days away from possibly opening and we have no idea whether we're going to or not, or whether we're going to be waiting till the end of the month. We're a year down the line with this pandemic and they, Welsh Government, should have learnt by now how to communicate with people. We're being treated like children in a room and not being given any information. We can't make decisions for our own businesses if we're not informed and prepared." She said she could not buy some stocks such as food items without knowing whether reopening would be allowed. That says it all, Madam Chair, I support the motion.
Councillor Sarah Jones.
Thanks, Chair. I try not to be too long, I'll just try and keep my comments quite focused, but I think I speak for everyone and everyone out in the community, I'm just feeling absolutely exhausted with it all at the moment and feeling really quite mentally fragile, but I totally understand the public health imperative and why we've had to do what we've done as a community and society. But I think what I feel right now most of all is just concern and that concern is around that we're losing sight of hope and councillor Dimmock touched on that. And I think the narrative has to change quite quickly. We're hearing today about a third wave, a fourth wave, we've got to give people hope and that hope comes in the form of a detailed roadmap or plan out. And just to pick up on the point you made councillor Petroni, there've been two plans, the original plan, the level system, was published in December. The plan you referred to was simply an updated version of that in February and I know that because I've been looking at it very closely, but it doesn't give enough detail that we need and our communities need to give them that hope that we're all crying out for. And, you know, I could talk about a number of areas, I think I could talk quite authoritatively on business, but I'm not going to do that, I just want to focus my comments on wellbeing, particularly on children and young people. Councillor John mentioned about obesity being a key marker in some of the most serious Covid cases and we're all fully aware of the health benefits of exercise. We know that outdoor activity has really low rates of transmission, so why are we being restricted from outdoor activities? Why am I, as a woman in a rural area, not being able to drive to meet a friend, to be able to exercise? Why am I having to go out and exercise alone? And we all know too well, very sadly, that that, even in this day and age, is a risk to women. My children are both back in school next week fully, they are going to be in a classroom of 30 other children, they're not able to go and play football with their friends outdoors. They've spent months without seeing other children, other than through FaceTime and screen time and it is really heartbreaking hearing firsthand the impact that this pandemic is having on our children, the young people, in terms of their mental wellbeing. And honestly, some of those stories we're hearing are absolutely heartbreaking. And what I'm seeing unfortunately, and it is happening, is that people are now disregarding the rules and my plea to Welsh Government is please now allow organised activities to take place, to hopefully prevent some of those activities happening in unorganised, unregulated environments, which will increase risk and do such harm to the positive trajectory that we're on. And as I say, I'm a sports club volunteer and my parents, my children are desperate to get back to something that's safe to do, it's Covid-safe outdoors, doing outdoor sport. And they just can't understand why they're being prevented from doing that. In Scotland, children from Friday will be able to get involved in outdoor sport, the 29th of March, children in England will be able to get involved in outdoor sport, in Wales, we don't have any dates. And I totally understand the caution, but these are my pleas for a roadmap, that the Welsh Government will look to prioritise the removal of outdoor sporting facilities from their list of closed premises, I think they need to do that ASAP. They need to allow the return of organised group activity for our under-18s and they most definitely need to allow individuals to travel by car to exercise. I think that is absolutely imperative now and it was a really ill-conceived and ill-fought-through policy which has restricted a lot of women and vulnerable people from being able to get out and exercise. And as I say, I could have focused my remarks on any area today, business, jobs, education, everywhere needs a clear roadmap out of this. And I think, you know, if we can focus on sport and wellbeing tomorrow, I hope the First Minister will listen to his communities. He provides this roadmap out and I fully support councillor John in this motion because we really do need to give people the hope that they need now, especially our children and young people who, as councillor Greenland has said quite rightly, they've been the ones that have been hit hardest from the lockdown measures that we've had. So fully support councillor John's motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Armond Watts.
Chair, I'm so sorry, I had what I had to say, I'm not going to waste any more time. I want you to just crack on with the meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Kevin Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Before I start with the main thrust of what I was going to say, can I actually say that I agree with something Sarah just said? My ward, part of it covers the Blenavon Heritage area, the mountainside, for me, the idea that you can't get in a car and drive three miles up the road and walk the mountain without posing a risk to Covid is frankly nonsense. I think you're far safer doing that than you are walking through Abegavenny town, having a stroll through there, but there we go. I think you need to be careful what you wish for by asking for roadmaps. I'm convinced that Boris in his crystal ball of it'll all be over by June 21st might be wrong, that's the same Prime Minister actually, they said it would be over by last summer and then the autumn. That's the same Prime Minister, actually, that said it would be over by last summer, and then the autumn, then Christmas, now the spring, now it's June the 21st. With this virus, you cannot tell how quick and how fast it spreads. We get two people coming from South Africa or Brazil, that mutates, it spreads, we're in trouble again. Positivity rates tend to be below 5% for the end of these restrictions. At the moment in Anglesey, I think they're still at eight and a half. Now, I admit Anglesey is at the top end of Wales, but if we're going to have an All Wales approach, All Wales has to be considered. Patients in hospital, I think on the sort of 8th of March, there were currently 52 average of a seven-day period being admitted. It follows infection rates, and then sadly deaths follow on from that, and I think there was 36 people on the 8th of March currently being ventilated in hospitals. It's all going down, it's all going down in the right way. At the moment, there's no evidence whether it's lockdown, the vaccine, a combination of both, they don't really know. They're still trying to figure that one out. I believe the vaccine has played a major part in this, and one of the reasons it's been successful is because it was done by the public sector, our NHS, who knew exactly what they were doing, rather than some paid consultancy company who had no idea about Dublin as something that they'd never dealt in before. We've also got to make sure the infection rates and this R rate, the R rate isn't quite so important from year on end, because all those who've been vaccinated and the four-week level after the middle of April would be sort of middle of May, so by then, anyone who's vulnerable should have been vaccinated, certainly that wanted it or offered it, and then by then they will be less likely to be hospitalised, which is the key to it, and if you're not likely to be hospitalised, you're not likely to need intensive care or ventilation. I sat outside the crematorium two weeks ago for somebody just a little bit older than me, watching him and his family go in for his last journey, and I also remember the family who I went to the crematorium to say goodbye to for it, so believe me, you have to be careful what you wish for. This motion has been brought the day before the review, I don't quite understand why. It'd be interesting to see if the cabinet member that's responsible for the education of our children will actually say on here today that it's absolutely safe for all people to go back to school, and there's no no threat to the cases rising or anything like that, it's all okay. The Prime Minister put out his roadmap, relying on data, not dates, and then filled it completely with dates. Stay local thing, I'm concerned about that, I can't understand where the common sense people come, however, until we see the detail, it's a bit unfair to criticise, isn't it? It's constantly been referred to by councillor John in this as speculation on this, speculation on that, and to be fair, councillor John, you speculated on most of it. So I think the credibility of that takes it out the window, so all I'd like to say, Chair, is you need to be careful what you wish for. There are certain things that need to be in place, ready to go forward, and I'm sure they will, and I'm sure people have given plenty of notice. I want to see it as much as anybody, because my mental health is going round the twist, and maybe our cabinet can find a way of getting us back into the council chamber at least soon, that we can all see each other face-to-face, smile and wave, and then go off and make friends afterwards. Thank you, Chair.
Right, councillor Paul Pavia, then I'll ask councillor John to sum up. We'll go to the vote.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, only very briefly, I'm not going to labour the points that have already been made. But as Chair of the Economy and Development Select, you know, I'm privy to the information coming in to the Business Resilience Forum, we've done a fantastic job over this last year. Chambers and the businesses they represent are desperate to have some information, something to grasp on to, as councillor Jones and councillor Dimmock have said, that little bit of hope, but also in terms of their preparation as well. You know, in terms of what the UK government set out, you know, it is obviously a longer roadmap than the short path that Welsh Government have put forward, but there's a lot of things that can be done, there's a lot of caveats that can be, that can be put in place, you know, in the UK government plan. The caveats not before are really, you know, two words, but it can make a huge difference in terms of how flexible and how nimble governments can be to allow various degrees of opening. And I think you've got to have that firm a plan, because, you know, you will have potential cabinet members making things up on the hoof or making policy up on the hoof, and, you know, we remember what Baroness and Lennon Morgan said in early February about the early opening of gyms and leisure centres, you know, they were going to be potentially one of the first to open. You know, realistically now, from what Welsh Government says, it's going to be one of the last things to open, so, you know, you've got a whole sector up in arms, because, you know, you've got ministers making policy up on hoof. So can I just support this motion forward by the cabinet member, and hope we can get support for it, thank you.
Councillor John, do you like to sum up briefly, and then we'll move to the vote.
Thank you, I'll try and be as brief as I can, so I won't respond to points that all members have raised, although I would like to say that I thought councillor Sarah Jones made some really compelling arguments for easing the restrictions, particularly around outdoor sport and exercise. I want to respond specifically to the point, the question that councillor Williams asked. Is it safe for children to return to school? Well, clearly, as a local authority, we don't have access to the expert scientific advice from Sage, but all four governments of the UK do, and in the meetings that we've had with Welsh Government, Kirsty Williams has been absolutely clear that the evidence from Sage is compelling, that yes, it is safe for children to return to school. Indeed, in the last week, we haven't had any cases of coronavirus in our, in our schools, and you'll be aware that we're now testing all school staff, not just teachers, all staff in our schools are able to access those lateral flow tests twice a week. I'm sorry that councillor Grokut feels that Boris Johnson ruined his Christmas, but I'm, I feel he's blaming the wrong person, you'll recall that lockdowns were introduced in Wales at a very, very early stage, in my view prematurely. So Cefili, there was a local lockdown introduced on the 7th of September. Some local authorities went into a lockdown when they just had 35 cases per 100,000 in a week. The fire break was far too early, and then we ended up in the situation, as I mentioned earlier, on the 14th of December, where the case rate was 556, and we weren't in a lockdown. The Welsh Government was quite happy, on the 14th of December, when the place was a blazing inferno with Covid, they were quite happy to carry on with that five-day Christmas free-for-all, where families could get together and, you know, presumably share their viral load. It's absolutely crazy, that lockdown should have been introduced earlier. You lock down at the peak when the danger is greatest. You can't lock down forever, because people get weary, you can't keep people in a state of lockdown perpetually, so we've reached the stage now, I think, where we're at that tipping point that I mentioned earlier on. So I hope Welsh Government will bring forward a proper roadmap to show how we can return to normality. People desperately need some hope, they need some light at the end of the tunnel, and I hope Welsh Government will bring that forward. Thank you all for your contributions today.
Okay, can we have the voting up now, please? Oh, getting really critical this. Okay, that's clearly carried. So we move on to members' questions from county councillor Tudor Thomas, please.
Thank you, Chair. The question, obviously, as is printed on the paper, and I'll try and keep it brief, but I just wanted to say that, you know, I've been concerned, like everybody else, about this issue of blended learning, the necessity of blended learning. You know, we've had seminars with inputs showing good practice in certain Malmesher schools, maintained schools, but I really want to be reassured by the cabinet member that all primary and secondary schools have done an audit to ensure the children who are on free school meals, or they're from background families who are on low incomes, who really cannot afford multiple devices at home, and plus as well, paying for a broadband package for their children. I've got a lot of sympathy for families who are on low income.
We usually just go straight to the question, as printed sometimes, all right?
Okay.
And bearing in mind it's been a long meeting, I would appreciate.
Yeah, I've listened to people who've gone on it lengthy, but I just want that reassurance, because I am concerned about that across the authority.
Councillor John.
Thank you. Well, can I thank councillor Thomas for his question? I know as a proactive member of the Children and Young People Select Committee, he's taken a keen interest in this area. And we've been working with Welsh Government on an initiative to refresh schools' digital network infrastructure and invest in replacement devices, mainly laptops and tablets, to enhance digital teaching and learning. Now, this multimillion-pound project was brought forward during the pandemic in an effort to ensure that remote learning facilities were enabled for all schools. Our digital programme officers worked extensively with the SRS and with schools to ensure that digitally excluded learners received all the help and support that they required during the Covid pandemic. They gathered information from households on their ability to connect to the internet and provided MiFi units, mobile broadband units, where they were needed. They provided laptops to learners who needed an internet-enabled device to access HUB, that's the All Wales Learning Platform. We've provided several thousand new devices across our schools to support blended learning requirements with ensuring that children, particularly children eligible for free school meals, are included in that. We've also worked with teaching staff to ensure that they have access to technical support where it's been needed. So we're confident that all households and learners who've engaged with their schools have received the tools they need for blended learning. Our schools have also worked really hard with their families to identify gaps in provision and to ensure that every child and young person has the opportunity to engage in distance learning.
Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Thomas?
No.
No, okay, thank you very much. Right, we've got some council reports now which affects our staff, so most of our offices are going to leave us now. And I just want to thank them all very, very much for their contributions throughout the year and throughout today, because it's been a lot, very lot lengthy meeting, and I appreciate our officers of being watching and ready to offer support. So I'm going to hand over now to our chief executive, Mr Paul Matthews.
I can guarantee you my colleagues are devastated that they've had to drop out at this meeting at this point in time. I'll do my best to be brief, because I don't really think you want an hour, but this is actually quite an important report in many, many ways. You know, it's been a challenging sort of session this afternoon, that was always going to be the case. My goal with this report is to be absolutely neutral. Part of my job is to try and position the council just at least one step, if not two steps ahead of where it needs to be. So I need to be thinking about not only the Covid situation that we've got now, I need to be assure myself that we're ready for a wave three if it comes, and what those circumstances could be. But equally, I need to assure myself that the council has the capacity and the capability to be ready to go into a very, very different zone over the course of the next two to three years. You'll have your own views in terms of language, but you'll gather from this report that I'm not currently a big fan of sort of new normals or build-back betters or anything of that nature, because I just don't think the substance is there to justify it. I've set out my, some of my reasoning on that in Para 31 through 39 from memory, but the core of this report is that I believe I need to make some some slight adjustments to the overall portfolio and balance of the strategic leadership team of this organisation to give us the very, very best chance of continuing to do well for your citizens. I've set out the proposals in the report. I think it's important that council has the chance to have a look at these proposals, and it's important that council has a chance to debate them with me. I've always appreciated your general willingness and inclination to charge me with setting the organisation, and your, I guess, your candidness in being able to hold me personally to account for its success or failure. That's very helpful to chief executive. As I say, the proposals are straightforward, I'll quickly counter through them, and I mean quickly. As your chief executive, I fundamentally believe that I need to be able to create the time for myself to spend a little bit more time in other places. There's going to be a lot of policy, there's going to be a lot of money and a lot of contestability flying around the United Kingdom over the course of the next two to three years. I've never been a fan of waiting for it to happen, I do believe there's an opportunity to influence some of these things, and money can sometimes be sticky, if you're in the right conversation at the right time. I think you'll want to consider that. I've only ever had two deputy chief executives in all of my time here, some of you will recall Moira Wilkinson, most of you will recall Kelly Byrne. I've been travelling without, since Kelly won the secondment some time ago now. It's my view that the organisation would benefit from having the nominated second in place, if I am going to have the headroom to go into some of the places that I think are necessary. It gives you a natural point to come towards, and it gives me the confidence that the organisation is in good hands and consistent hands. So I hope that makes some sort of sense. You'll note that the proposals put forward, that they're not cost-neutral, they're aimed at making quite a significant cost reduction to the organisation. To be absolutely clear, that's not factored into the budget you considered earlier, because I didn't think it would be appropriate to do it, because I would be second-guessing any decision that you took today. But we, I suppose, quietly continue our path towards delayering this organisation. We have another significant retirement coming up in the course of the next few months, and as a leadership team, we feel that there is a better way to take forward the the overall construct of the council, whilst at the same time affording you another significant saving that you can make choices on another day. There'll be another significant retirement later on in the year, and I imagine that we'll take exactly the same opportunity to explore options of non-replacement there as well. You also know, those of you that I've worked with for some time now, I'm not a huge fan of major organisational restructures. I usually think that they provide good evidence that people have run out of ideas about what they're meant to be doing, so they create an illusion of activity by just juggling things around. This is not an organisational restructure in any way, shape or form. I'm proposing what I consider to be modest but important rebalancing of the portfolio responsibilities of officers of the council that make up the strategic leadership team. Madam Chair, I'll stop there and take questions.
Thank you. I'm going to look for proposal.
I second the proposal, madam chairman.
The recommendations, please, at this stage, and the second, and then perhaps you could answer a few questions for us. Councillor Fox.
Yeah, thank you, madam chairman, I'm happy to propose or second, but I think it was the second there. I just wanted to welcome the report, madam chairman, and, sorry.
See you, councillor Fox, but we can't hear you.
Oh.
Chair, I can hear him, I can hear him.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear as well.
Okay, so I think most can hear me.
Apologies, I turned my sound off. Mr Matthew speaking, I've got to turn it back on.
Sorry, madam chairman, yeah, I was only going to welcome the report and support the chief executive in his recommendations. He has given myself a good insight into this prior to, and I have shared those that perspective with the cabinet, and cabinet are comfortable with this point. Obviously, we, you know, it's for the chief executive to make these sorts of, these decisions, and but I thank him for enabling us as a body of councillors to take part and ratify these. So, madam chairman, I'm happy to support this and move or second as requested.
Thank you, so, do we have a second?
I'll second that, madam chairman.
Thank you, councillor Jordan, that was councillor Jordan. Right, so it looks like councillor Petroni might have some questions.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Three points. First one is, are we stretching ourselves too thinly? You've never heard me really defending senior officers and extending them, but the gravity of what we've just been through, the cuts that have been imposed over the last, wow, since I've been a councillor, it's been cuts on cuts. And we've been, as I think you've said yourself, chief executive, and tried to be a lean organisation in terms of staff, but there is a point where you lean means that the organisation doesn't function properly or as efficiently as it should do. Are senior officers taking on too many responsibilities and being a jack-of-all-trades and not really focusing on key areas? That would be one concern. Second concern is the way senior officers are being asked to do quite a lot of subjects, quite a lot of issues on different subjects, and it's quite a lot of issues on different subjects and it's, there's no way you could really do all of them really, really well. And I fear that we need to really get, have a chief officer, well, a senior leadership team that are more focused rather than broad, swayed, brush, cover all these areas. I have a real fear for that. And third but last least, is it wise to do such a restructuring now? And as you've said in your report and in your verbal update, that you're going to be slanting toward external view, which I don't necessarily disagree with, when we know the political leadership is about to change for this council? So we've had one of the worst years on political history in terms of, and this country's history. The council's been under the cosh and we're about to have massive changes at our senior leadership team and we're about to have a big political change. Is it the great timing?
Councillor Guppy, would you like to ask your questions?
Yeah, thank you. I've got no issue with what's been proposed. My only question is, like a HR question, is are we allowed to do this without going or will it go through internal and vet?
Okay, and councillor Howarth.
Thank you, Chair. Just if I do get cut off, just accept that. I've got things going on with the internet here tonight, I don't know what. Yeah, I just want to follow on from Dimitri's point there about being a bit thin on the ground there, reference to the senior leadership team and the amount of portfolios that they may have to cover, i.e. section 151 officers and roles that they'll have to fill. It does scare me a bit and it scared me for a little while as well. You know, I mean, as you know, we've had some real good senior officers move on or seconded out there and they haven't been replaced. And I do have real concerns about the limits that we go to, reference to this team. I just want to ask Paul, is he confident that actually, I mean, we're going to need every ounce of breath in the next 12 months to get through where we are at the moment and it's not going to be, going to be easy and everybody is just about corping. I think it's been said many times today, we are just about hanging in there and I do feel that perhaps we, I would like to revisit this as quickly as possible once we've settled down, that's if we do settle down. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. I have a lot of faith in Paul Matthews, I always have had a lot of faith in him and I'm sure that after, with all he's done this year and coped with, I'm sure that he can cope with rearranging his senior leadership team. They're all very good people, very strong and have got a great potential, all of them. And I think that they can do the job and I have every faith in it and I have faith in Paul's decisions. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll invite our chief exec back in to answer the questions.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I've got five questions. I've got three from councillor Petruany, one from councillor Guppy and a more general one from councillor Howarth. I'll zip through them all. Councillor Petruany, too thin, was where you started. Looking at the proposition, I'm not looking to take out any member of the strategic leadership team. Indeed, I would put it to you that one or two members of the team are still growing. Certainly from my perspective, I'm probably currently part of the highest potential strategic leadership team that I've ever been a part of. So I'm not worried in any way, shape or form at the moment about the balance, the tenure or the ability of individuals to not just cope but to thrive within the portfolio modifications that we're putting forward. The ability to create a little bit more time, principally, I guess, for myself and for Matthew Gatehouse to focus outside. I probably should have said what I mean by that. You know, as we front up to the next sort of couple of years, we've built, something is that you might not necessarily be too aware of as councillors, we have a very unusual and deep network of third-party relationships. So, you know, setting the politics of it to one side, if I may, we still do hold relationships with sort of UK civil service departments, that's RARE in Wales. We have relationships with NESTA, with the Young Foundation, with the King's Fund, with New Local. And a lot of the best thinking that I detect going on in the UK at the moment is probably with some of these partners. That's why I'm quite keen to, we don't need to establish, we just need to keep fresh some of those networks that have served as well over a significant period of time. Timing is never perfect, but a key point of these propositions is we're putting away, I guess, banking, the saving. It's there, it can be called on. If over the course of the next six, seven, eight, nine months, we have a gap created by this slightly shuffle or indeed something else comes to the fore, then we have the capability financially to plug it. So I'm giving you the discretion, I'm giving myself the discretion alongside you to review these as we go forward. My instinct is that we're not necessarily going to need to, but I think it is right that we have that capability. Councillor Guppy, can we do it? Is it appropriate? Is it constitutional? Is it lawful? Yes, yes, yes and yes. The process that we're following has been reviewed not by your monitoring officer because he's caught up in it, but our deputy monitoring officers have looked at the process. We know the law. What's being proposed here is nothing that's not appropriate. All of these chief officers have previously been appointed by you through a full third-party exercise and largely speaking, what we're doing is looking at a changing portfolio. So that's all good and fine. And I think councillor Howarth, your question to balance, again, it's something that we forever do keep, well, I keep forever keep under review. Whenever anybody significantly leaves our organisation, the first question I always ask myself is, do we need to replace? The second one is, do we need to replace like for like? And depending on the answers to those two, we would either move forward with the recruitment process or we wouldn't, as the case may be. The last time we significantly restructured our organisation, that was part of the design. The design was to continually review opportunities as they become available and that's exactly what we do. We have currently, in my perspective, we have a strong and capable strategic leadership team, but we also have strong and capable heads of service. If I were likely to want to make an investment or I think the council may need to make an investment, I suspect in the times ahead, it might be at head of service level or perhaps one level below that. I think that's where the pressure is likely to be felt by the organisation over the course of the next 18 months. But as I've already said, your budget does not account for this saving. It's there as, I would describe it as a windfall. We are building in the flexibility to be able to adjust and we will learn as we go. But as things stand at the minute, I think this is the best balance that I can put forward to you. I'm conscious of the financial pressures of the organisation. You debated hard earlier today, you know, the level of council tax and the things that you wanted to think about as an organisation. So this decision is not neutral, it has to exist within that context and I think it's probably the right decision for now.
Thank you very much, Mr Matthews. Right, if we could have the voting facility, please, we can vote on the recommendations in the strategic leadership team adjustments report that you will have in front of you from our chief executive.
Chair, may I just say a few words, please?
Shall we finish the vote first, councillor Howarth?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Clearly carried, that's fine. Okay, councillor Howarth?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's just going on from Paul's comments about organisation here, which has been clearly carried. I'd just like to pass on my thanks to the officer which may be moving on or retiring, et cetera, et cetera. Competent officer, may not get the chance again. I'd really like to thank them for their time and to come up through the authority over many, many years. Like I say, I've been here a long time and they were here before me and I just wish them well, whether they're retiring or moving on, because I do believe that we may not get the chance to do that, Chairman. So I'd like to just pass on as a member on record, thank them for every effort, the time they've put into Monmash County Council. Thank you, Chairman.
Can I come back in, Chair? Councillor Howarth, that is incredibly kind and I'll make sure that the individual hears those words. She has been frankly a stunning servant to Monmash County Council and in my view, she's far too young to retire, but she's not up for the conversation. So sometimes you just have to wish people well, don't you? And I'm sure she's ready for the next stage of her life.
Well, lucky lady retiring. And the other thing, Chairman, is I heard something about we're having politically reorganisation with the Monmash. Tell me more, Dimitri.
I would just like to say, councillor Howarth, thank you for bringing that up and yes, I'm sure we all pass on our best wishes to the officer who's retiring and we join you in that. We have one more item, or two more items. The last confirmed the minutes, obviously. The next one is a publication of pay policy statement as required by the Localism Act and that's councillor Murphy, once again.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And the purpose of this report is to approve the publication of Monmash's pay policy in compliance with the Localism Act. And the recommendation is that the council approves that pay policy for the year April 21 to 22. The case, the council approves the, approves to pay the nationally negotiated and agreed pay award of the joint national council for local authority chief executive officers. Chief executive officer terms and conditions of employment and pay are prescribed by the JNC for local authority chief executive officers. The individual basic salaries of all officers within the scope of the JNC for chief executives of local authorities increased by 2.75% with effect from the 1st of April 2020. The pay agreement covers the period 1st of April 2020 to the 31st of March 2021. That always causes confusion, but that's the way it has to be done. As regards everybody else, the council approves to pay nationally negotiated and agreed pay award for those employees who come under the JNC for chief officers. Chief officers' terms and conditions of employment and pay are prescribed by the JNC for local authority chief officers and individual basic salaries of all officers within the scope of the JNC for chief officers and local authorities increased by 2.75% with effect from the 1st of April 20. The pay agreement covers the period 1st of April 20 to the 31st of March 21. And I apologise for having to read that out, but it was a necessary thing to do. So Monmash County Council recognises the need to have a clear written policy on pay and reward for employees. A policy provides a framework to ensure that employees are rewarded fairly, objectively and without discrimination. The pay policy for 2122 includes updated information in relation to pay bands and salary information, which is effective, which was effective from the 1st of April 2020. Updated information with regards to pension contributions from the same date. And the policy is underpinned by the single status agreement signed as a collective agreement with the trade unions on the 2nd of December 2010 and other nationally agreed terms and conditions for employees of the council. Madam Chairman, this is the 10th publication of the policy and goes through exactly the same thing every year and that's all I think I need to say.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Fekins has moved the recommendation, we accept the recommendations in the report, we approve the pay policy. Do we have a second there?
Second.
That was councillor Fox, I believe.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Right, so councillor Howarth, did you wish to ask a question or make a comment?
Question there, it does mention the bank holiday and the night work shifts, et cetera. I got no issue with that. Could I ask Phil, how are we handling the leave that employers are entitled to before the end of March now? Because there is a lot of controversy over there on unpaid leave, et cetera, and holiday pay. Have we set something in criteria there and i.e. if the pandemic stretches out? Who knows? We don't know, as has been said today. So let me give you an instance then. So we have employers who've been working through, through the pandemic, who haven't taken holidays, who are entitled to the holidays. Have we given weeks to carry over, let's say? Because my only concern is, are we building anything into the programme just in case or have we handled the leave entitlement to employers in this section of criteria for 2122? Have we done anything there? Because there will be a lot of employers who are entitled to leave, but they may be having to take it now, let's say, because if they don't, they'll lose it.
I understand we have Sally Thomas with us who might be able to offer some response to that. Is that all right, councillor Murphy?
That's exactly what I was going to say, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your question, councillor Howarth. In answer to that, we have provided a range of documents, FAQ documents, and that's certainly one of them that is help our managers to manage leave. You're quite right, it's been quite a journey over the last year and where some people are able to take leave and then other teams have been super busy and so some colleagues have accumulated leave. But we've operated last year and SOT have made the decision again this year to operate a flexible approach. So we're encouraging colleagues to have conversations with their managers so that they discuss their leave plans. It's flexible enough to allow colleagues to carry over more than the five days that is set out in our policy pre-COVID. But we are encouraging those discussions. It's really important to us that colleagues are able to take a break from work and managers and service areas have been working hard to make sure that that happens even in the very super busy teams such as CTP, for example. And you're right, there's a variety of different circumstances depending on which service area you're in. So I think the answer to your question is, we're alive to that issue and we've been providing ongoing support to colleagues and managers. And actually, we have now a weekly Q and A session for all our people leaders, that's head teachers and managers, so that we can help to talk them through any specific issues. I hope that helps.
Thank you very, thank you very much, lads. And I'm sorry we've had such a long wait this afternoon.
That's okay, that's absolutely fine, no problem.
It happens every year, doesn't it, so?
It certainly did. There's no worries at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you, councillor Murphy. So I think we'll put that to the vote now. This new voting app does seem a lot quicker than the old one. Right, that's clearly been carried. Yeah, okay, that's clearly been carried. Thank you very much indeed. So one last item to confirm the minutes of the last meeting.
Move those, Madam Chairman.
Second, Chairman.
Confirmed.
Okay. Nobody's got objections, I take it? Okay. Well, thank you all for your patience. I certainly did not expect this meeting to take so long, so I'm just absolutely exhausted. I think I might just wait here for the next meeting. Let's go in home. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Sheila.